Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I would like to call to order this meeting of the Arlington ISD Board of Trustees on July 20th, 2020 at 5:03 PM. Due to health and safety concerns related to the COVID-19 coronavirus, this meeting will be conducted by video conference or telephone call. At least a quorum of the board will be participating by video conference or telephone call in accordance with the provisions of Section 551.125 or 551.127 of the Texas Government Code that have been suspended by order of the governor. Members of the public may access this meeting via AISD website at www.aisd.net. The Board of Trustees on July 20th, 2020, beginning at 5:04 PM, will convene in closed session pursuant to Sections 551.071 through 551.084 of the Texas Government Code in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act for topics set forth on our agenda. We will reconvene in open meeting at approximately 6:15 PM. Thank you. At this time, I will reconvene into open session, this meeting of the Arlington Independent School District Board of Trustees for July 20th, 2020, beginning at 6:21 PM. We will start our meeting with the open ceremony. Please join Mr. Justin Chapa in leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, President Mays. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chapa. I would ask that anyone who is not speaking or raising their hand to make a comment to please keep their mute button on so that there's no additional distractions while someone else is talking. Now, if you would please join me in a moment of silence. Okay. Thank you very much. Since this is a call meeting, before we continue on with our agenda, I would like to give an opportunity for our superintendent to kind of lay the foundation of the thought process. I know we talk about how, at least in Arlington ISD, and I'm sure people that are a part of education anywhere, lead with their heart. And I definitely believe that that is what this district is doing, leading with their heart and then making decisions, having discussions with their mind. So with that being said, I would like for us to start off with a few words from our superintendent, Dr. Cavazos.
Thank you, President Mays, and thank you, Board members. Today, we have an important topic on our agenda, and that is the reopening of schools and when that will happen and how that will happen, and online learning. So I'll start with what I've said for many, many times over and over. And that is, we know that the best place for a student to be is in a classroom with a teacher. If there was ever any doubt of that, we have answered that question, that that's the best place for learning, for support, to happen. So that really isn't the question tonight. The question is, when is that possible? When is it safe? When is it safe for our students, our staff, and our community? And that really is the guiding question tonight. And so I've also said this, and I'll reiterate it. Safety is our priority, and it is our team's priority. It's something that we will not compromise. We won't compromise the safety of our students, our staff, or our community. We live in an interdependent world. We, as a school system, are interdependent with our community, with Tarrant County, and with our state. And so the actions we take are not in isolation. They are in direct connection to spread of COVID, testing for COVID, contact tracing, hospitalization, and the load that our county is experiencing today. We're interdependent. And so with that, and to that end, just like in March and all the way through, we've been in communication with our public health authorities to guide our efforts and to guide our thinking into when is it safe to reopen. And I'll tell you that it is very unlikely that we will have face-to-face instruction August 17. And it is unlikely because of our current situation. We're working with our county health authorities to make sure that we have the flexibility to do online learning and to keep everyone safe. And I know that some of this is disappointing to some people who want face-to-face instruction. Quite frankly, we all want face-to-face instruction. As I said earlier, that really isn't the question. The question is, when is that safe? And so as we continue to move forward, we will continue to communicate, we will continue to inform. Tonight, our discussion is very much centered on when we open. And again, that is not likely on August 17. But when we open face-to-face, this is what some of the protocols would look like. And I think it's an important discussion to have tonight. The other part of our conversation tonight is related to online learning and how online learning will look in the fall, the type of engagement, the type of teacher support, the type of synchronous type of activities, the type of progress monitoring, attendance, grades. Because quite frankly, some students will be online, but for sure, at some point, all students will be online. And so we want to make sure that we have the best online instruction and the best online learning, online learning by our students, and to prepare for both of those things. So again, I thank everyone for their patience. And quite frankly, you know, TEA has made some adjustments even on Friday. And while some of them are helpful, they're not enough. And TEA and their weeks of decision-making, sometimes arbitrary number of weeks that the board can control, are sometimes absent of our local context and science, which is why we rely on our public health authorities to guide our decision. And we're working diligently with them on this effort so that we can safely ensure that our students are served and when they're served online, that we serve them exceptionally well. And when that day comes, that we open our buildings, that we do it with the guidance of science and the guidance of what we know we contribute to our community. We have to be mindful of that. So I wanted to frame that, President Mays and Board, early on so we know kind of where our discussion is as a team. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Cavazos. So now we continue to our open forum of agenda items. As stated on the posted agenda, members of the public who desire to address the board regarding an item on this agenda are required to register by sending an email to the Superintendent of School Secretary LBENJAMI@aisd.net no later than 3:00 PM the day of the board meeting. Due to the number of speakers that we have, I will read these instructions once. If any speaker wishes for me to repeat it when it is their turn to speak, just ask, and I will do that. Otherwise, this will be the time for instructions. This is a routine part of the school's board agenda for regularly scheduled meetings. This segment of the meeting provides citizens with an opportunity to share their views with the trustees on items that are on the agenda tonight. It is not intended to be a discussion or a debate, and trustees will not reply to speakers. Derogatory comments aimed at an individual will not be tolerated. Personnel matters are not appropriate subjects for open forum. You will have five minutes to speak. Mrs. Benjamin will notify you when your time is up and to end your presentation. So with those instructions being read, Ms. Benjamin, do we have requesters registered and ready to address the board regarding agenda items?
Yes, ma'am, we do. Our first registered speaker is Brianna Bianco.
Okay. Give a few minutes for Brianna to get on. Welcome, Brianna. I'm not for sure if you want to show your audio or not. That is strictly up to you.
Hi, thank you.
Hi, Brianna.
Hello.
Please go ahead. Your time starts now.
Thank you so much. My name is Brianna Bianco, and I am a teacher and instructional coach in Arlington ISD. I would like the board to know that it isn't just me speaking here today. I have spoken with many other AISD teachers and parents in the past few weeks, and they have agreed to let me speak for them. You're going to hear a lot of different opinions today, but not all opinions should have equal weight. We need to trust the local health officials, doctors, scientists, and experts. That's whose opinions matter the most here. There are tons of people who want to open up schools, but just because we want something doesn't mean it's the correct or safe thing to do. We're going to have to make some unpopular decisions. We can't wait for someone else to make the right decision because our federal and state leaders are not making those decisions for us. It's on us now. We have two main jobs as educators, to teach and to keep children safe. And we can do both of those things by teaching virtually and keeping school buildings closed until health officials deem it safe to reopen based on data. Unfortunately, it can no longer be about personal preference or what one thinks is best for their family. It is our duty now to do what is best for everyone. I am only as safe as my community. We are all going to have to make sacrifices over the coming months. One of those sacrifices might have to be virtual learning. Currently, virtual learning will be the only safe option to help keep kids on track and build relationships before we can all go back into our school buildings. Virtual learning has been shown to be an effective method of education, and we can successfully do virtual learning with the proper funding, training, and plan. We all know that face-to-face would be better for our young children, but we are not in a position to do that safely right now. We simply don't have the time, money, medicine, or knowledge to make it safe yet. And we all know that even if we do face-to-face learning, it would not look the same as before, as there would be little socialization. And the very act of trying to put us back into school buildings before it is safe may be very traumatic to students and to teachers. We are not in a normal situation, and we cannot just simply go back to normal. We have to put aside all of our own magical and wishful thinking and embrace science. Schools in Israel opened after having flattened their curve, and their cases then skyrocketed, leading to school closures there. And we haven't even flattened the curve here yet. I understand that there are parents who need childcare, but that issue will not be solved if we open our schools right now because we would still have to open and close schools intermittently throughout the entire fall, leading to childcare issues again. New studies are coming out every day indicating that children, especially those 10 and older, are just as likely to spread this disease as adults. And according to the White House, Tarrant County is in a red zone, meaning that they recommend stricter closures than what we currently have. We need to do everything we can to stop the spread of this virus. And one of those things needs to be reopening schools only when it is safe. Tarrant County's Public Health Director, Dr. Vinnie Taneja, said on Tuesday that the best scenario for the start of the school year is online-only learning. I'm urging you to listen to our doctors and public health experts. Are we comfortable with even one student dying? Are we comfortable with even one teacher dying? We are all still in that first stage of grief, denial. And we can no longer afford to be in denial about the losses that we have already suffered, the losses that we will suffer, and the reality of our current situation. We cannot wait until death happens in our schools to do the right thing. As an educator in our district, I must use data all the time to meet student needs. And I urge the school board to use all of the current data and scientific knowledge that we have now to keep students, their families, and AISD staff safe. In summary, I'm asking you to consider what some other districts around us are already doing: heeding the advice of local health experts, a virtual start for all students, perhaps moving back the starting date of school in order to better prepare for virtual learning, removing holidays in October due to the state fair cancellation, and perhaps adding a holiday on Tuesday, November 3rd, for Election Day. Thank you for your time and for listening to the wisdom of experienced teachers. I yield the rest of my time. Thank you.
Thank you, Brianna, very much. And as an educator for you and those that you stand behind, thank y'all for what you do for our students in the classroom.
Thank you.
Ms. Benjamin?
Yes, ma'am. Our next speaker is Andrew Franklin.
Andrew is connecting. Okay, welcome, Andrew Franklin.
Hello.
Hi, your time starts now.
All right. Good evening, everybody. I'm a chemistry PhD student at UTA. To be clear, I'm not speaking as a representative of UTA or the Chemistry and Biochemistry Department. I'm speaking individually as an employee of a public Arlington educational institution. I'd also like to disclaim that I don't currently have any teaching duties, but most of my colleagues do. These teaching duties are what have compelled me to call this evening since UTA is a public educational institution with some amount of guilty to the city of Arlington. I am deeply concerned for the safety of my colleagues who have to teach in-person labs this fall for their students, for the families of everyone involved. Arlington is my home for the foreseeable future, and I care about the well-being of my neighbors. So I am also deeply concerned for the safety of the educators, students, and families of AISD. My time is limited, so I'd like to focus on a danger of in-person classes that I'm more familiar with than most. Winter is flu season, but cases start as early as October. Influenza and COVID can co-infect the same person, and COVID antibodies are impermanent. Fortunately, social distancing, disinfection, and mask ordinances mitigate the spread of influenza as much as they mitigate the spread of COVID. However, we also rely on flu vaccines to mitigate the spread of influenza. My mother manages a lab for ATCC in Virginia. ATCC is the largest cell culture collection in the world. My mother's lab typically produces and distributes the flu vaccine. When COVID became a national emergency, my mother's lab was retooled for producing COVID tests. Currently, ATCC is also working on a test that differentiates flu and COVID, but flu surveillance took a hit because of the pandemic. If anybody is unaware, influenza is constantly mutating, and there are always multiple strains transmitting during flu season. Because surveillance had to be retooled for COVID, it is very possible the flu vaccine may be less efficacious this year. As an aside to anybody listening, flu vaccines are incubated in chicken eggs, so those allergic to chicken products and certain immunocompromised individuals can't get the flu vaccine, especially since there's some concerns that it may have a lower efficacy this year. Anybody that can get the flu vaccine, please do, to protect those who can't. Finally, a South Korean CDC study has shown that children ages 10 to 19 are the most likely to spread COVID at home and thus influenza as well. COVID rates across Texas, including Arlington, are still rising. We're above where we were when the shutdown began, and there are no signs that we're getting this under control. This is highly indicative of an unsafe in-person educational environment come fall. Opening schools to in-person classes will be inviting COVID in past the threshold, and October onwards will bring a new set of challenges with influenza co-infection. I'm pleading with the Board of Trustees to come to terms with this now rather than later with the fact that we will be living in a pandemic until a COVID vaccine has been disseminated. Until then, let's make sure we're not trying to force a normal standard of living, and we keep focusing on the standards that keep us living. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Franklin. Ms. Benjamin?
Yes, ma'am. Our next speaker is Mr. Stephen Poole.
Okay. Mr. Poole is connecting. Welcome, Mr. Poole.
Good evening, Ms. Mays. I don't think I need those instructions again. Thank you for the time, members of the board, and Dr. Cavazos and President Mays. I'm Stephen Poole, the Executive Director of UVA. And I just wanted to share with you overwhelmingly, our members have shared with us that now is not the time for in-person school. They want to be back in their classrooms with their students, but not at the risk of their own health, the health of their students or their students' families. Dr. Cavazos was much too diplomatic than I would be when I say the governor and TEA has failed us. They have not provided the directions necessary for us to be able to open schools up in person. So I'm hopeful that Tarrant County will follow the lead of Dallas County and shut down in-person school for a while until we do have a plan in place that can protect the safety and health of all students and staff. But absent any action of Tarrant County and the Tarrant County Health Officials, it's going to fall on your shoulders and the shoulders of the superintendent to make that decision. And I hope you do come to that decision that in-person school needs to be delayed until we have a better plan. So I just want to share that information. I know this is not an easy task, but if there's anything I can do to help, please let me know. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Poole. Ms. Benjamin?
Yes, ma'am. Our next speaker is Mr. Michael Martin.
Okay, Mr. Martin is connecting. Hey, there is Michael Martin. Welcome, Mr. Martin.
Hi, good evening. Thank you for having me. Good evening, Board members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. I want to start by saying I greatly appreciate the leadership, excuse me, that you, Superintendent Cavazos, the AISD leadership have exhibited during this coronavirus. We're guilt. There was just, there was an outpouring of contact from teachers reaching out and to us as a family and checking on our students and everything. We just greatly appreciate that. It's been, as crazy as this whole thing has been, AISD has, I feel has handled it very well to date. There's, there's no doubt that this event has been an extremely trying and stressful time, and I'm sure that it has been very difficult for school leadership as well. There's been an immense amount of ever-changing information about this virus, and I'm sure it's been very difficult to disseminate and make decisions. My family and I greatly appreciate your dedication to the education and well-being of our children and as well as your teachers and staff. I've seen in the past couple of weeks several school districts beginning to delay their in-person reopening, and that is what's brought me here to speak tonight. I strongly believe that our children need the ability to return to school this fall. We were very happy to see that AISD gave the option for online learning and in-school learning, and I believe that is the best way to handle this situation moving forward. School opening on time this fall is imperative. Children need the ability to go to school for their education and interact with their teachers and other children, and of course socially distance with precautions in place. The option for parents to select online learning is great for... has said.
Sounds like we might be having some audio difficulties.
For me, sorry.
Okay. Yes, we are here. Lisa, if you don't mind, maybe just kind of adjusting a few more seconds so that Mr. Martin can repeat what he said. So sorry, we cannot hear you, Mr. Martin.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, please continue.
Okay, sorry about that. I'll just, I'll start off where I left. What was the last thing that you heard me say? I apologize.
So I believe the last thing that I heard you say was you were glad that we had offered an option of both online and maybe in-person.
Great, okay. Yeah, I just, I wanted to say that I greatly appreciate what Dr. Cavazos had said earlier this evening in his remarks, that safety of the students and teachers and everything is paramount. So we definitely am empathetic to that and greatly appreciative as well. To continue, I strongly believe there's much more risk to children in not opening schools this fall on time and in person. There's an incredible amount of statistics out there available on why schools should have the option for in-person learning this fall, many of which are related to child abuse and child endangerment situations at home, not to mention the engagement factors benefited by in-class learning, enrichment programs, counseling, screening for hearing and vision, intervention, specialized learning services, leadership, and social interaction skills, many of which may not be available through online learning services. Another major factor to keep in mind is simply for parents being able to go back to work. There are countless individualized scenarios families have been facing and will continue to face during this time if they don't have the option for families or for their children to go back to school. School and the community centered around our schools are a pillar of our society. They are a constant positive for many children and their families within the community, and the need for them is paramount at this time. I implore the AISD to continue moving forward with reopening on time this fall with the option for online learning and in-person learning as currently presented. Further delay in reopening for in-person learning is a great detriment to our children and our community. I want to thank you again for the opportunity to speak tonight. Thank you for your service and your leadership during this time. There's no doubt each of you are in a difficult position and have much to weigh regarding this decision moving forward. I offer my support and prayers to each of you however we may move forward with this school year. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Ms. Benjamin?
Yes, ma'am. Our next speaker is Ms. Jeannie DeKine.
And Mrs. DeKine is connecting. And there she is. Welcome, Jeannie DeKine.
President Mays, members of the Board of Trustees, Dr. Cavazos. Good evening. My name is Jeannie DeKine, and I serve as the President of the Arlington Council of PTAs. Thank you for the opportunity to provide comments during the open forum portion of tonight's meeting. First, the Arlington Council of PTAs applauds the recent decision made by the TEA last week that schools will be allowed to operate virtually without losing state funding if a local health agency orders classrooms to remain closed. Like the changing tides of this pandemic, many decisions on public education have fluctuated over the recent weeks. But with a new school year starting soon, a reasonable path forward was needed now. Families and educators, administrators, and associations like the PTA have all voiced concern about opening school buildings during the height of a pandemic. We are thankful that state leadership heard our calls and acted in the best interest of Texas students and teachers. Second, we acknowledge that now is the time for school districts to put the best plan for their own communities into action. Regions across the state are diverse in their needs, and AISD is no different in that regard. We support local control by officials who live and work where our students attend school. And we support you in the difficult decisions that you are making on behalf of our children, given every possible input. Thank you to superintendents. Thank you to Superintendent Dr. Marcelo Cavazos and Board President Keisha Mings for writing a letter to Governor Abbott requesting to suspend the state accountability system and to pause high-stakes testing this coming school year. Texas must allow educators time to focus on the needs of our students, assessing students to identify gaps in learning due to the pandemic and teaching the missing concepts. It is critical we give our children, educators and schools time to recover instructionally and emotionally from last school year while coping with an uncertain future. Finally, the Arlington Council of PTAs vows to continue to advocate for all of our district's children. As the district's plan for school reopening are announced, evolve and respond to this pandemic, we remind you of the valuable role that parents and families play in supporting our students in campus communities. It is more important now than ever that our district and schools engage with parents and families on how to help our students succeed academically. We know that remote learning has the potential to play some role in every single AISD's student experiences for the foreseeable future, ranging from completing all coursework online to temporary online learning as campuses reset after confirmed COVID cases. The reality for our community is that the most effective way to prevent COVID-19 from deepening inequality for an entire generation of Arlington's children is to equip and resource families to support learning at home. This includes ensuring access to technology, providing families with the tools to help their students learn, and training and accessibility of teachers. As the largest children's advocacy organization in the city and as leaders in our districts and on our campuses, the Arlington Council of PTAs asks for a seat at the table when evaluating and determining how we can best support our students, teachers and schools, both on campus and virtually. Our council and local PTAs can effectively leverage the experiences of parents, families and community networks as academic partners in addressing the expected learning gaps resulting from the inherent inequities of distance learning. The responsibility that our district and US trustees bear in navigating all of this, a pandemic, the safety of our children, teachers and staff, and the development of our community's most precious resources, our kids, is massive. Your commitment to making these decisions is appreciated more than you know. Thank you for your leadership during this time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kine. Thank you. Ms. Benjamin?
Yes, ma'am. Our next speaker is Brandon Fulton.
Okay, Mr. Fulton. I see that. There you go. Hello, Brandon Fulton. Welcome. The time has started.
So good evening.
I see that. There you go. Hello, Brandon Fulton. Welcome. The time has started.
So.
I see that.
Sorry about the audio issues. Thank you for the opportunity to voice my concerns on the topic of reopening schools for this school year. I first like to clarify that I'm not speaking on behalf of any organization and that the opinions that I state here are entirely my own. Just to give you some background about why this issue is important to me, I'm currently a chemistry PhD student with both research and teaching duties. Additionally, both my mother and my father are public school teachers. So to make my position clear from the get-go, I hope that the Arlington Independent School District will be proactive in their efforts to mitigate the damage done by COVID in the upcoming months. Since we don't have even a year's worth of data on how this virus spreads, the only way to keep the residents of Arlington safe is to refrain from fully resuming in-person education for the fall semester. So as a lab instructor at a university, the possibility of me carrying the virus affects not only me and my family, but also my students and my coworkers and their families and anyone that they go into contact with. This issue is compounded by the fact that chemistry labs and other science labs, they're often conducted with shared laboratory equipment. And students often have to work in close proximity to one another, which makes the spread of the virus even more likely. Another thing I'm witnessing firsthand is the emotional toll that my colleagues are undergoing as they're forced to decide whether they want to risk infecting themselves and their families by resuming their face-to-face teaching duties, or if they want to risk losing their income by opting out of their teaching duties. Additionally, since our laboratory courses have been online since mid-spring, and I'm currently teaching a summer course, I've had some time to think about the pros and cons of online schooling. I think the downsides of online schooling, they're mostly obvious, but I think that by continuing the online schooling in the fall, we can work out some of the issues with online schooling and help make education more accessible to everyone in the future. So just an example of some of the major issues that I think could be developed during this time. One thing is making sure that all students have access to personal computers and the technology required to engage in online learning. This is especially important in rural areas. Also improving online grading and feedback methods, which can in turn help reduce paper consumption and also working on ways to make the online education experience more personal and less detached. So just to restate my opinion, I encourage the Arlington Independent School District to refrain from fully reinstating in-person courses for the fall semester to help protect both the physical and emotional well-being of the students and residents of Arlington, Texas. And I can only hope that the universities will follow suit. It's my hope that the Governor of Texas and those responsible for the decision about reopening can be convinced that a statewide solution cannot properly address local issues and concerns, and that the reopening of both universities and all public school systems can be left to the discretion of the local administrators who know their situations best without risking losing funding. And I can only hope that they will choose what's best for their communities. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Fulton. Ms. Benjamin?
Yes, ma'am. Our next speaker is Ms. Sarah Spurrier.
Ms. Spurrier is connecting. There we go. Hello, Ms. Spurrier. Welcome.
Good evening, Dr. Cavazos and members of the school board. My name is Sarah Spurrier, and tonight I'm speaking. Can you not hear me?
Sarah, we hear you. Can you hear me?
Um, yes.
Okay.
I think I was on the delay at the very beginning.
Okay, you want to start over?
No, I'm good.
Okay. You can continue.
I am speaking tonight as the local president of the Arlington TSTA NEA members. Arlington AISD should take the extra time that TEA is allowed for virtual learning to create a valid plan with students, employees and community input. That plan should keep the safety of students and staff at the center of all decisions.
Sarah?
I, I got it.
Okay.
Yeah, I figured out the problem. Thank you.
Okay.
I was, thank you. Staff is very worried about what the district is discussing because we're supposed to report to campus in a few weeks and there's no plan in place that employees have access to. Many employees are high-risk due to age and/or medical issues or live with or help family members that are high-risk, and the fear contracting COVID-19 will greatly harm them and their families. Many of the teachers and staff are terrified to go back into the classroom that has never had district-supplied Kleenex, much less hand sanitizer. In fact, hand sanitizer dispensers installed at the avian flu were never refilled in many buildings and hung on the wall empty for years. Is the district going to provide daily PPE to all staff, including masks, gloves, appropriate protective clothing? Many of the staff doubt that the district will provide enough PPE and cleaners to protect students and staff. There are several questions that employees have been asking that need to be answered for the best of our, for our decision, for our health and the health of our families. When an employee tests positive for COVID-19, when they are quarantined, is their sick leave covered? This should not come out of the employee's own sick leave. How will the district know if someone assesses positive? Do we assume that parents will volunteer the information? Are employees being required to give their medical information? Who was providing the daily PPE for staff? Who was providing hourly cleaning and cleaning supplies? Currently, each campus does not have enough custodians to provide this. Are the custodians being provided with daily PPE more than a simple cloth mask? Is the district mandating masks for all? TEA has left this open. What happens to the student that refuses to wear a mask? How are teachers being expected to teach in-person and online simultaneously? The amount of prep time that would need to go into this is bare minimum the double of prep time given in previous years. Substitutes teach multiple schools. What if they are diagnosed with COVID-19? Do all the kids in each school now have a quarantine and get tested? Who's going to pay for that? What if someone who lives in the same house as a teacher tests positive? Does the teacher now have to take 14 days off from work to quarantine? Is that time covered? Is it paid? If a teacher has five classes a day with 30 students, do all 150 students need to stay home and quarantine for 14 days? Do all of those 150 students now have to get tested? Who pays for these tests? Are they happening at school? How are the parents being notified? Does everyone in each of these kids' families need tested? Who pays for that? The governor and the Texas Education Agency have given districts the ability to start the school year virtually for at least the first four weeks without having funding withheld and with the possibility to extend because no one can give a set date for when this pandemic will subside. The TEA guidelines will allow parents to choose to have their children taught remotely. Teachers who fear will they be compromising their health by returning to campus also should have a choice to teach remotely. The TEA guidelines do not require districts to give teachers that option. Will the district have this option? Can teachers teach remotely and not have to report to a classroom to teach their students virtually? The governor and the Texas Education Agency need to reassure districts they will get their funding if they choose to use only remote instruction until it is safe for students and school employees to return to campuses and not set an arbitrary date. Requiring districts provide on-campus instruction while the pandemic is still raging is blackmail.
Ms. Spurrier, your time has expended.
Okay, it was the beginning. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Spurrier. Ms. Benjamin?
Yes, ma'am. Our next speaker is Hope Aguilera.
Okay. Aguilera is connecting. Okay, welcome, Ms. Hope Aguilera. I think you're muted. We can't hear you. Or your volume's turned down. Now it looks like there may be some connectivity issues. So we'll give it a few seconds. Yeah, we still can't hear you. We see you. So we do see you, but we cannot hear you. Okay, Hope, if you can hear me, a suggestion I'll make is maybe see if you can chime back in. Okay, Ms. Benjamin? Hopefully we will get Hope back.
Yes, ma'am. We're working on that. Our next speaker is Ms. Melissa Riordan.
Okay. Okay, she's connecting in.
Oh, hello.
There she is. Welcome, Ms. Riordan.
Hi. First, I'd like to say hello and good evening. I believe the protocol set for a new academic year in August should be reconsidered. I first want to clarify that I'm a chemistry PhD student at UT Arlington who teaches chemistry labs, and I am not speaking as a representative of the department, and I know this is a grade school district, but I am a concerned educator. Regardless of society's opinion about the questionable need for concern pertaining the virus's impact, more precautions still need to be in place for the upcoming academic year. Hourly, daily to weekly data about COVID is discovered and changing. Researching a new virus involves many factors that take more than a few months of research. Scientists spend years sometimes researching and collecting data before being able to draw a definitive conclusion. But until there's a clear understanding of COVID, much like the flu, precautions still need to be in place. I already applaud the action taken by grade schools district to offer option of online or in-person academic learning and providing rental technology to support either decision made by the parents for this upcoming school year. Although the need for normalcy returning is high, you not only are in charge of educating the future of America, but the students and in your employees' safety. Many of my grade school colleagues miss seeing and interacting with their students in person, as do I. But the safety of everyone is more important in order them to be successful and want to be in the future. Many people who have recovered from COVID now suffer with debilitating side effects, damaging lungs or heart conditions that prevent them from continuing their daily life, enjoying sports or being able to find out if they even enjoy playing a sport due to even losing limbs. I know this from personal experience. Currently, my colleagues are facing the decision whether to risk their and their family's health by resuming face-to-face education. The positive cases of COVID reported are higher now than when the state originally closed in March. But I want you to think about how many times a student is written up, talked to about their uncooperative actions in one school year. It's a lot. Imagine having to implement mask and social distancing rules to students who don't care from a student who does or is immunocompromised, while still trying to maintain the academic educational standard. Not to mention, one of the biggest factors discovered about COVID severity is exposure time. A school day is eight hours. In this century, we are benefited by the technological advances to allow education to continue in an online format. Of course, as with every teaching method, there are pros and cons, but safety should always be a number one priority. I know that not all parents have the option of keeping their children home. I suggest that in-person education only be for those parents who do not have the option of online education. But you can use areas at the school like large gyms, music room, stage, portioning off the cafeteria to accommodate each grade level for these few students who can't be at home. There is a reason many children get sick once they return to school because children touch everything, and then they touch their face, which spreads germs. In addition, the wintertime is the start of the flu season. Without this virus under control, the US might not be able to treat all patients either affected by COVID and/or the flu, which will bring the country back to the same position that we were in March. By delaying reopening, in-person academic learning could help prevent this recurrence. Therefore, I believe that education should remain online. I appreciate your time and any consideration made toward continuing online education this upcoming year. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Riordan. Ms. Benjamin?
Yes, ma'am. Our next speaker is Yes, ma'am. Our next speaker is Mr. William DeKane.
Mr. DeKane is connecting. Welcome, Mr. DeKane.
Good evening, President Mays, members of the Board of Trustees, and Dr. Cavassos. My three daughters attend an elementary school in the district. Under normal circumstances, they learn best in the classroom, but these are not normal circumstances. COVID-19 has changed everything, and I am concerned about the safety should their schools reopen for in-class learning. And I'm concerned for the health and safety of the students, teachers, and staff of their school as well as those across the district. I'm in favor of students, teachers, and staff wearing face masks during the conduct of school. I'm in favor of making frequent hand washings and sanitization of surfaces in the school environment a common and habitual process focused on helping decrease the spread of COVID-19 among our students, teachers, and staff. I'm aware of members in our community publicly advocating for return of in-person schooling with minimal to no protective measures such as wearing face masks. I strongly oppose the idea of not wearing face masks and believe a significantly larger group of members within our community believe greater safety measures are required during this pandemic. We can save our own lives and protect each other during this crisis by taking a few simple steps until a more long-term solution or vaccine can be found. We can do daily temperature checks of students, teachers, and staff. We can wear masks in classrooms, in the halls, or on the buses to and from school. We can wash our hands frequently. We can disinfect the areas where we work and learn in, and we can utilize barriers where appropriate, and we can minimize contact. I'm okay if the start of school is delayed, or if we begin with online-only schooling. When the day comes that some or all of us are back in the classrooms during this pandemic, my expectation is that this Board of Trustees will choose the harder right over the easier wrong and require a strict and disciplined approach to bring your children, teachers, and staff safely back into the classroom. The stakes are too high this time. Lives really are on the line. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DeKane. Ms. Benjamin?
Yes, ma'am. We have Ms. Hope Aguilara back on the line to try again to visit with us.
Hey, thank you. I see Hope is connecting. It looks like you're still connecting. But we see you, Hope. Yeah, we cannot hear you, Ho. No. Let's see, was there any instructions? Okay, do you have a live feed going, or maybe you can mute that? Okay, we see you. Okay, it looks like you're muted. Unmute yourself. We might have it this time. I see a mute button on. Welcome, Ms. Aguilara.
Thank you. This could be why we might have issues with online learning in my household this year, actually. First, I'd like to say that I mirror everybody's comments that have, the people who have taken the time to come tonight and to speak their minds. I'm grateful for our teachers. I'm grateful for our school district and the time that everybody's taken and committed to figuring out the problems that we're facing at this point. But I actually come here tonight because I feel that there are concerns that aren't being addressed. First, I came to the meeting hoping to get answers, and I feel like at this point, no answers really are being provided for us as families to be able to make a choice regarding the education of our children and what we're going to do. And I am disappointed by that, and hearing the comments that are being made, I'm also concerned about the direction that we're going to go moving forward. I do want to state that the AISD has had since March to develop a game plan regarding this coming school year. I and many families that I've spoken to are frustrated with the inability to commit to a plan of action and move forward with it. Because of this, I feel that you've left many teachers and families in limbo, and you've removed our ability to plan how best to educate and to care for our families while still providing for them financially. I strongly feel that consistency is necessary for our children to progress in their education, and a consistent plan from AISD is expected. I feel that you failed us in this regard. I strongly wish for the back and forth regarding this to stop. A commitment to when the start day will be, whether or not it will be a longer school year, the online curriculum or the in-person, except for when we change our minds because other things have to change. There has to be a commitment to a plan. Our tax dollars have been allocated to you, and they pay for the education of our children, and you offer a safe place for our children while we provide for them. And we provide for you financially as well. We have no choice but to pay our taxes. I feel that AISD needs to honor the investment that we've made by offering in-school person-to-person classes, sports, and fine arts programs. We all have to plan for emergencies. We have to have a contingency plan in place to run a successful business and to run our families. And I'm dismayed by the lack of foresight and planning that I'm witnessing during this crisis. I would like to state, for the benefit of others listening, that in 2021, the term for three of our board members will come to an end, and the mismanagement of this event should be reflected during our next election cycle. I want to leave this meeting with the following question that it has been mirrored by another participant. We need to know, what is the plan for when a student gets sick? We need to know this before we make a decision as far as how we're going to continue with the school year, whether or not you'll quarantine everybody, whether or not there'll be a domino effect because of that. We cannot make choices regarding our family and what we're going to do until you commit to how you're going to handle it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Aguilara. And just a comment to make is that this is a good meeting, because on the agenda, we will be addressing some of those very items that are being raised this evening. Ms. Benjamin?
Yes, ma'am. Our next speaker is Ms. Kim Martinez.
Okay, I see Kim joining. Welcome, Ms. Martinez.
Hi, how are you? Good evening, President Mays. Can you hear me?
Welcome, Ms. Martinez.
Hi, how are you? Good evening, President Mays.
So if your live, yeah, it's probably the live streaming.
Sorry, I forgot to mute that. Every time a speaker ends, I'm like, oh, my God, it's going to be me. And then I'm like, no, it's not me. Okay. Okay, good evening, President Mays, members of the board, and Dr. Cavassos. Thank you for allowing us to speak here today. Today, I'm speaking just as a parent and as a teacher. I'm going into my 17th year of teaching, and I teach the little bitty ones, the four-year-olds, that the distance learning is a little difficult with them, not impossible. But I do want everyone to know that I appreciate what our school leadership has done. I have faith in y'all. I would not want to be in your shoes. But I do believe that you have all of our best interests at heart and that you are following the science and the data and not the politics and not the vocal minority that just wants to shout, "Get them back in the building." We know it's not safe. Sadly, our government, our state, our federal, and the TEA has failed us abysmally. It's terrible that they haven't provided us with any good options. And what we need right now is funding. We need funding, 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 and we need that so that we can employ more teachers, so that we can have those reduced class sizes, so that we can provide PPE, so that we can accommodate staff to work remotely, so that we can get technology for the students that need it. We need to be able to repair and replace and maintain the technology that we have out there. You know, there's so many things that need to be done. But right now, I really feel that the safest thing to do is to have purely online. And I empathize so much with those families. I know that they need school. I know that those babies need the social-emotional learning. They need to see their teacher. They need to get hugs. And, you know, we need to sing and dance and do all those things that we do at school together. But when we have an infection rate of between 12 and 20%, depending on which day you look at, it's not okay to do that. I cry almost every day thinking that I can't go back into my classroom with my kids. I miss them so much, and I know they miss me. But we have to think about safety first, theirs, ours, and all of our families. My 15-year-old is a baseball player at Lamar, and he wants to go back so bad as well. But what we want and what's reality are just not the same. I hope that we can spend the time now, once we make a decision, to start fully virtually, I hope, that we can spend the rest of our time coming up with a plan for those kids that really need to be in a building with teachers in front of them, whether it's because of finances, you know, parents need someone to watch their kiddos and they need to be at school so they can work, or if it's because they're sped, or if it's because they're very young. All of those things matter, and we need to come together as a community. I volunteer right here, right now. If you guys need someone on a task force to help figure out how we can make that happen safely, I'm your girl. But right now, I just want to thank you guys for following the science and not the politics.
Thank you very much, Ms. Martinez. And as an educator, thank you for what you're doing for our students in the classroom. Ms. Benjamin?
Yes, ma'am. Our next speaker is Ms. Helen Reeve.
Thank you. So, Ms. Reeve, if you can hear me, if you can hear me, I understand that you're audio-only, so you may begin speaking as you choose. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Helen Reeve, and I have five children in AISD schools at Ditto Young and Martin. I'm addressing the board in direct response to Dr. Cavassos and Ms. May's letter to Governor Abbott dated July 16 with regard to school reopening for in-person learning. We stated that students, teachers, and support staff will attend school at great personal risk. As I read the letter, I understood this as a part push to start the new school year entirely online and perhaps beyond the first and second six weeks. Respectfully, a 96.3 recovery rate, according to the Johns Hopkins University out today, is not great personal risk to me, and this number includes even the controversial cases and spans all age groups. The median age of death for COVID-19 is 81. If there has been anything learned over the last four months, is that schools need to be open? Children under the age of 20 are at almost zero risk of COVID-19, and the vast majority of those that do contract it are not major vectors. There are studies out of Australia, Ireland, and France where contract tracing, I'll back this up, Germany, Denmark, Norway, all open schools without issue. Israel has had some spread. However, that data is not yet clear or fully evaluated, and it is an outlier. Decisions based on news reports and irresponsible headlines instead of the actual facts seem to be driving a lot of what's happening in our communities. People are scared, and I would be too, if I only got my information from WFAA or Fox 4. I do not want my children to contract COVID-19. I don't want them to get influenza, strep throat, norovirus, MSRA, or any other communicable disease, but that has never stopped me from sending my children off to school. Often, the benefits outweigh the risks, and we see that in the required vaccinations that the CDC recommends and the districts impose. My children are fully vaccinated, even at the risk that one of those vaccines could cause an adverse reaction. Frankly, COVID-19 is pretty far down on my list when it comes to the concerns over my children's health and safety. The American Academy of Pediatrics, the American Academy of Child and Analytic Psychiatry, the American Psychiatric Association, all recommend school reopening. The benefits heavily outweigh the risks. I will repeat, the median age of death from COVID-19 is 81. Have we forgotten that people died before COVID-19 arrived here? Have we forgotten that the average life expectancy of an American is 79 and a half years old? I am not saying that COVID-19 does not kill, that it's not a real thing, that it should be ignored. It does, it is, and it shouldn't. But it's also not what the flashy headlines are making it out to be, especially when it comes to our youth or even those under age 65. It does not pose great personal risk to the vast majority of Americans. One fact that seems to be agreed upon by all parties is that yearly influenza poses a greater threat than COVID-19 for our youth under 20. We have continued school, bus service, sports, and cafeteria service, knowing the rate of death and risk for this. But what about the teachers? The teachers are adults that can take measures that they deem necessary to protect themselves, as do all the other adults in the country that have gone back into the workforce. Many employers are offering hazard pay, and perhaps this is something that the schools should look into instead of abusing cancel culture and using time and expense scrubbing a school of its pride. How did that become a priority over getting our children back into the classroom? The unknowns and the what-if. We can't stop life based on the unknowns. We have it before, SARS, MERS, avian flu, and we shouldn't now. We can't live life for fear of death, then it's just not a life worth living. Those that fall into the high-risk categories are likely quite used to taking extra precautions and will continue to do so. I do not discount their risk at all. However, for the majority of us, open the schools. Kids need it. You have given parents the choice for online or in-person learning. Keep that choice. I respectfully disagree that students and staff are at great risk because the statistics just don't support that statement. I am hopeful that honesty and common sense will drive the decisions being made for our youth. As I understand Dr. Cavassos and Ms. May's letter, they want AISD to start completely online. The TEA has already allowed for that option this past Friday.
Ms. Hutcheson, your time has expired.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Reeve.
I'm sorry, Ms. Reeve. I apologize.
Ms. Benjamin?
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Hutcheson is our next speaker. I apologize for that slip. Jennifer Hutcheson.
Thank you. Okay, I see Ms. Hutcheson connecting. Okay, I see Ms. Hutcheson. Hello, welcome, Ms. Hutcheson.
Good evening.
Okay, maybe you're live streaming muted in the background? Yeah, all right, perfect. Your time has started. Thank you.
All right. Good evening. I'm going to read a letter that I wrote to y'all, but I just wanted to read it for everybody. My name's Jennifer Hutcheson, and as we ready for a new school year, I want to begin by thanking all of y'all for your service during this very strange and unprecedented time. I have been most impressed with how you've handled what has been thrown at the AISD these past few months and really appreciate your continued focus on protecting the safety of your staff and students for this upcoming year while striving to provide excellent education opportunities for our children. Being taught in an in-person classroom provides a dynamic, multisensory, well-rounded learning experience that is almost impossible to achieve in an online setting. There has been a large social and mainstream media pressure to move towards only providing virtual and online learning. And I understand that it may become necessary due to COVID-19. However, I really want to encourage you to provide in-person, on-campus learning starting on time on August 17. I completely understand that there are so many facets in making this decision, and I want to let you know that there's a strong, albeit sometimes silent contingent of parents, guardians, and fellow Arlington taxpayers who, like me, believe in your ability to keep our children safe while providing them on-campus learning. As of this evening, I've received over 250, I think it's 262 responses from individuals and families here in Arlington. between, um, from individuals and families here in Arlington um, that would like to support the choice to have in-person instruction start on time. In-class teachers are approachable in helping student learning, but because of the challenges of online learning, of which the teachers most likely have not received adequate, adequate training for, that connection is often missed through a screen. In-class teachers can serve the whole child by providing social emotional support when the children are challenged. Online learning, as experienced last year, was not able to address these stressors nor fully support their needs. There's not in a way to achieve a truly closed and protected online teaching platform. A shy or ashamed student may struggle to speak up and ask questions in such a hectic forum. There are so many questions associated and fears associated with the use of YouTube and other e-learning platforms as learning tools. Working parents as well, well as those, excuse me, well, as well as those, I do know how to read, I promise, um, with multiple children cannot monitor every moment online. One click can place a student in danger exposure to inappropriate content. Students without fast modems and connections are also deprived of the enrichment offered through such contact, um, content as well. An in-person classroom experience is the only way to provide a level as well as a safe playing field for all involved. If we are forced by COVID to resort to only online courses for a short period of time, my concern is that they would need to be heavily synchronous and engaging for the students in real time for the majority of the allotted class time, as well as man, um, as well as flexible in their instruction and accessibility for those unable to follow a traditional school day schedule due to having working parents and guardians. Children with special needs across the spectrum currently receive pull-out instruction and enrichment to meet their individual needs, which include 504 accommodations, mental health services, gifted and talented coursework, and social skills training. None of these mandated needs have been met through online coursework thus far. Another question as a parent of a Corey Academy child is how they will ever implement the Spanish and Mandarin immersion that is intertwined in the current fine arts dual-language curriculum. Fine arts education is important to both of my children, one through his experience at Corey and the other as a member of the Symphonic Orchestra at Bailey Junior High. And it's most difficult to receive instruction through a screen regarding any of these subjects. High-level recording equipment is required for accurate assessment of progress, and the overall experience of participating in many of these courses cannot be replicated while instructed through a screen. In closing, I want to restate my conviction that having the option of returning to campus for in-person instruction for families choosing to do so is in the overall best interest of the students of the AISD and the community that you serve. I, like so many parents and supporters of the AISD, are prepared and willing to make this a successful year for y'all and for us, and will stand ready to do what it takes to provide a safe place to work and learn. I included the names of all those, um, standing with me. Y'all have received it in email, and I will happily update you after this meeting. Um, and I appreciate your time, and, um, again, thank you so much for all that you've done so far.
Thank you, Ms. Hutcheson. Ms. Benjamin?
Yes, ma'am. That's the last speaker for this, this session.
So thank you very much. Okay. Next on our agenda, there are no action items, so we will move to our discussion action items. Dr. Cavassos.
Thank you, President Mays, and, uh, this evening we bring an update, as mentioned earlier, and I'll reiterate some of the points just very quickly. Uh, an update to, uh, online learning and what that would look like, uh, as well as an update on, uh, the protocols that will be followed when we do return to school at some point. Uh, I'll reiterate the fact that the safety of our students, our staff, and our community will continue to be our priority. Uh, we'll be guided by our local health authorities, uh, and we will be also making decisions as we know that we are connected to a greater community of Tarrant County and the issues we're facing. I also understand, uh, that there is a need for online learning, but there's also a need for face-to-face instruction. And that, again, uh, has been stated over and over. Uh, that is not, uh, really the question necessarily tonight. The question is, when is that safe? And when is that possible? Uh, so with that, we continue to work with our health authorities, and I, I, um, uh, as I said at the beginning, I, I do not anticipate that we will have face-to-face instruction beginning August 17th. Um, I do anticipate that we will continue, uh, and, uh, do, uh, online learning. And so to that end, tonight is an update on both of those fronts, on, yeah, when we do come back, how will school look and operate, and also when we begin online instruction, what would that look like and how would that work? And so, uh, I want to thank ahead of time the entire task force that has been working on this project. Uh, as you know, even up to Friday, uh, things have changed and continue to change from the agency, Texas Education Agency, from local health, et cetera. So I do want to commend the staff and all the task force members that have been working on this. Tonight, uh, Dr. Tracy Brown, Assistant Superintendent of School Leadership, uh, will be presenting, and Dr. Stephen Wertz, our Chief Academic Officer, uh, will be presenting in these two fronts. Uh, so we'll start with, uh, Dr. Brown.
Good evening, Trustee Mays and members of the board and Dr. Cavassos. Thank you for the opportunity to share this evening our return to school update. Go ahead and make sure I can get my screen up here. There we go. Appreciate the opportunity to be able to share and to be able to provide some, uh, context and some answers to some of the questions that were raised during the first part of our board meeting, um, this evening. So just a brief overview, we're going to spend some time talking today about the task force planning that has occurred over the last several months. I discussed health and safety operations, human resources support, and then, of course, the, uh, team that will really spend time talking about the virtual teaching and learning this evening, and then, of course, respond to any questions that, uh, members of the board might have. So when thinking about our plan to return to school, we thought it was important that we had guiding principles that would determine our work and undergird our work. And Dr. Cavassos has referenced several times today that the health and safety of our students and staff and our larger community, of course, is our utmost priority, um, as we return to work. Uh, rigorous learning, um, we know that in the spring we were launched into, uh, virtual learning pretty much overnight, and so we want to make sure that we are strengthening our learning, um, virtually and face-to-face, that students would have access to rigorous learning regardless of the location where they're learning. Educational equity, equity being a cornerstone of our work here in Arlington, making sure that, um, regardless, uh, the student's socioeconomic status, if they, they need resources, tools, technologies, that we'd be able to provide that for them so that they would have access to be able to, um, engage in, learn, teaching and learning in a rigorous way. The fourth guiding principle is stakeholder input. We know that we cannot make these decisions in isolation, so it was very important for us to get input from staff, from students, and from community members to help determine our next steps in our planning. And that fifth guiding principle, flexibility and grace, is really important. Um, our plan is to put together a return-to-work plan, return-to-school plan that allows for flexibility in the event we have to go in and out of closure possibly, and then allowing the grace to know that everyone's doing the best they can, and so just asking for that reciprocal grace from our community that we will extend to you, of course, as well. And the last guiding principle is around clear and concise communication. Um, in the age of COVID and this pandemic, um, information is flowing at a very steady pace. It changes quite a bit, and so it's important that we're able to cut through um, and to pull out the information that's important and relevant for our stakeholders and our parents and staff members, and communicate that in a consistent fashion. And we have a solid communications team who's done a great job with helping us with that. So this task force that we talked about, um, the task force is a large task force. We had 16 different leaders who are leading parts, who are leading committees, um, to help us go through all the nuts and bolts of what it would take to open school, regardless of whether it's face-to-face or virtual. We know that we had to plan for several different options. So we engaged, um, we engaged committee members. These were stakeholders, staff, parents. Um, we had teachers, central office members as well. Um, and we, of course, talked about professional learning and coaching. A committee focused on student conduct, food services, how are we going to make sure we're feeding our students? Uh, fine arts and athletics, student services, transportation. As you can see, um, it's complex work, and so we had to make sure we hit all of these components to have a robust plan for returning back to school. So I referenced to getting input from our stakeholders. So we actually began in May, um, issuing surveys to parents, um, to students and teachers to get an idea basically of how they experienced the online learning in the spring. That would give us ideas and input and feedback into our next steps and strengthening our system. We also wanted to make sure we understood from stakeholders, um, what are some concerns they had about returning to school? And what are some things that we could be thinking of to make sure that we can, um, to squash some of the concerns they might have, um, should we come back face-to-face, when we do come back face-to-face? So the thought is that we would continue to get feedback from our staff and, or from our parents to make sure we're prioritizing and refining our options for the time when we do return face-to-face. So I just wanted to share, um, just a couple of tidbits from that initial survey that went out to parents. We asked several questions, same with staff as well, to get an idea, what are the, what are the most concerning items that are stuck in your mind that we could make sure that we were tuned into and that we're responding to as well? So you see that first question is around, uh, personal protective equipment. How important it is that your children have access to that? And you can see that, you know, all of these are very important matters for our staff, as they should be, and parents. Um, so you can see the percentages there. We had over 6,000 parents who responded to the first survey, and here are the results. The second one is really about social distancing protocols, those recommended by the CDC, um, and/or TEA. How, how carefully will we monitor social distancing in our schools to make sure students are keeping safe distance? The next one is about performing mandatory symptom checks. So before students enter the building, how is, how important is to you as a parent that students are monitored for any symptoms of COVID before they enter the school? And the last one, um, you can see that it's important to me that classrooms and other areas are sanitized daily. You can see that is of critical importance to our parents, all of them are, but certainly making sure that we have sanitized environments, that we are touching up all those common areas, doorknobs, handles, things like that, that students touch quite a bit and share. So that was just an example of some of the, the data we received back from our parents from our initial survey. So Dr. Cavassos referenced this, but our partnership with Tarrant County Public Health and the Arlington Public Health Authority has helped, um, direct our guidance um, for policies, practices, systems, and protocols for social distancing, PPE, and hygiene protocols. So again, during that partnership, we were able to come up with what it might look like, um, when we do return face-to-face. So this graphic just really highlights, um, TEA recommendations and requirements to date. Now, we know it's been pretty fluid so far. It still could change. But as of right now, we wanted to share with you what recommendations TEA has made versus the recommendations and requirements that we are going to put forth as a system. So the first one is about face covering. It's been quite a bit of conversation about face coverings. And so, um, the TEA recommendation is that we comply with the executive order that the governor outlined, um, several weeks ago. Our recommendation and requirement is going to be that students in grades one through 12 be required to wear, um, face coverings. And if it's developmentally appropriate, of course, there may be some students who are not able to do that, but we certainly are going to require that. For employees and visitors will be required to wear, um, facial covering as well when they're on premises. For social distancing, where feasible, TEA has asked us to make sure that we encourage that as much as possible. Um, and of course, we can't guarantee it in our current space, but we are certainly wanting to implement that with many of our structures and transitions, and even in some classrooms where possible to be able to put enough distance between the students and the teacher as well. As far as hygiene protocols, TEA is recommending and requiring that we have, um, plenty of soap and hand sanitizer available for our students and our staff members. And so in Arlington, anyone entering the building will be required to hand wash or use hand sanitizer. Um, we will have hand sanitizer in the classrooms, every classroom. Students, when they move from room to room, will have to sanitize their hands. And each, uh, classroom will be outfitted with spray sanitizer liquid, paper towels, um, facial tissues, plenty of trash cans, and hand sanitizer so that, um, we can, um, disinfect and clean between classrooms. As far as health screenings are concerned, um, TEA is requiring that, um, the, the screening should include teachers and staff members taking their own temperature. Um, and we are going to go a little bit further for that. Our health screening questionnaire will be required one time each week for students, and I'll talk to you more detail about what that's going to look like further in the presentation. And health screening will be required for staff and visitors daily. Uh, temperature checks will be required for students, staff, and visitors who enter our facilities. As far as cleaning and disinfecting, um, you did notice in that data that the parents were very concerned about the cleanliness, and so it's very important to us that we are honoring that, that we are sanitizing between students, that any kind of shared supplies, materials, technology, laptops, um, that they're sanitized between uses. And then custodians will be working throughout the day to include disinfecting those common surfaces that I mentioned earlier. So these health precautions for face-to-face learning, when we do go back to our face-to-face experience, I mentioned a questionnaire that students will be required to, um, to complete once a week if they're experiencing any COVID symptoms, if they've been around anyone who's been exposed to the virus. And the result of that questionnaire is going to be used to help us determine if that student should go to school or remain at home for virtual learning. For our employees and visitors, they'll be required to complete a daily health questionnaire. Again, staff members asked to take their temperatures before they report to the, to the campus or to their department. Um, no visitors will be allowed on campus beyond the office, and it must be appointment only. And part of the reason, of course, is to try to mitigate the spread and try to limit the number of people who have access to our buildings or across our campuses at any time. Um, and our students and staff members will have access to a mobile-friendly application that's designed not only for the screening, for the questionnaire, but also for the contact tracing in case there is, um, a, um, in case we have someone who has been diagnosed with COVID, we'd be able to do some contract tracing. So as far as our personal protective equipment goes, so we have, uh, got an early start on trying to, to get PPE. And so we have received lots of supplies from Texas Education Agency, in addition to the supplies we purchased as a district. So we have hundreds of thousands of face masks already in our possession. We have, uh, thermometers that are non-contact, so if students are coming in the building, um, we'd be able to take their temperature without having to have contact with them. Face shields, uh, disinfectant, thousands and thousands of gallons of hand sanitizer um, with pumps for the classrooms and for our offices, sanitizing disinfectant for the classrooms and spray bottles, as well as gloves. So we have plenty on hand now, and we still have more that is forthcoming as far as, as relates to our PPE. In addition, our plant services team is doing a great job of installing Plexiglas or Sneeze Guard or Sneeze Shield, some call them, um, in the reception areas of our campuses so to provide an additional layer of support and protection for those who are on the front line um, in the front office areas of our schools. In the event there's a confirmed COVID-19 case, um, again, with our partnership with Tarrant County Public Health and the Public Health Authority, um, we have, um, put together a process for reporting confirmed cases of COVID-19. So if we do receive a confirmation that a student or an employee has tested positive for COVID-19, we will first notify public health officials, uh, implement contact tracing and self-isolation measures for that student or staff member who's been diagnosed. Of course, communicate with our families and the news media to inform of the diagnosis. Thoroughly clean and disinfect the facility. That is utmost important for us. And then, of course, if it is in a singular classroom, that we are able, after disinfecting to our satisfaction, reopen the classroom within one to five days after a diagnosis and infection. So as far as campus operations, there are four buckets we're really leaning into. When kids get to school, um, how they get to school, when they enter, while they're there, and when they exit. And for a lot of this, um, campus principals will have a lot of autonomy and control over how the structures look in their individual campuses. However, we'll provide guideposts and guidance for- However, we'll provide guideposts and guidance for expectations and then be able to see the campus plans. As far as getting to school is concerned, for those students who are riding the bus, we have lots of our students who depend on transportation to get to school. They will use hand sanitizer when they board the bus, and they will be wearing their masks when they are on the bus. Between groups of students, the buses will be sanitized to make sure that, you know, all the areas and seats have been wiped down thoroughly to ensure that they're as clean as possible. And of course, I mentioned grades one through 12, wearing the face mask as required by Arlington I S D. Upon entering the school, I mentioned before, we'll be checking temperatures of our students. All students will have an assigned area where they're to report to when they do go into the building. And that is to reduce the student density in the, in the building, as well as try to, you know, keep some social distancing and not have as many folks who are transitioning and interacting with each other, they'll have a certain spot they are going to go to when they enter their school. While they're at the school, it's going to be important for social distancing measures too, that we have additional restroom breaks scheduled throughout the day, elementary through high school. So our students will be able to go in smaller groups and avoid congregating in certain areas. When possible in the classroom, try to have our desk face the front as much as possible in the same direction to eliminate or avoid the opportunity for students to, again, congregate in small groups, even though we know that's how they, we know they love to enjoy learning that way. In this, in this age and instance, it's important that we have some space there. And of course, I mentioned all students receiving hand sanitizer on the way in and out of classrooms. As far as recess is concerned for elementary students, that's an important part of our, of our time and their time together. So when we do, when we do report back to school, I will make sure that recess is scheduled. That'll be one class at a time and enjoying recess, and that's going to help for contact tracing too. And make sure when students enter and exit the building, they are, their hands are sanitized as well. As far as exiting the building, it's very similar to our entry. We'll utilize multiple exits to promote social distancing. So we may have different grade levels or classes exiting different parts of the building on any given day, just to make sure that we are able to reduce the congregating of students in one spot. We're asking students and staff members to, to leave the building at least an hour, no later than an hour after the final bell. And that is to allow our custodial team to have proper time to disinfect and clean before we come back to school the next day. We have made some adjustments with our custodial team. So during the daytime, we are going to have additional custodial staff in the schools to make sure we have enough, we have enough personnel to be able to maintain the cleanliness, wipe down common areas, knobs, handles, and just make sure we're doing a very thorough job of cleaning our buildings. So let's talk about some meal service for our students. Again, regardless of whether we are virtual only, if we have a hybrid where we're face to face for some and some are virtual, we're going to be able to make sure we're offering food services for our students. So in the event that we are opening on August 17th in a virtual environment only, we will have it at 25 designated sites for students to pick up breakfast and lunch. We will follow USDA guidance, USDA guidance on this for free and reduced lunch, depending on where you fall. If your free lunch, of course, will be free, it's reduced, there'll be a small fee. You must be enrolled in A I S D or having student ID number to pick up the meal. And the parents can pick up the meals for their kids, but they'll have to have the ID or an ID number for us to give them those meals. If we start online virtually only, we'll have meal pickup twice per week for our families. And those meals will be designed to be heated at home. When we do go back face to face, and we have some students face to face and some who are at home in our hybrid model, we'll have breakfast that'll be grab and go. When students are close to the entry, for students, they'll grab their breakfast and go to their designated spot to eat. For lunch, we'll have meals picked up in the cafeteria, with the exception of pre-K. They'll receive their breakfast and lunch in their classroom with their teacher. In grades two through 12, we are going to allow some campus autonomy with this. We're going to try our best to make sure we have as much social distancing as possible. That may mean some students are eating in classrooms. It might mean there are larger spaces that we can social distance where students can eat lunch together, but in larger spaces, there will be some flexibility with our two through 12th grade. And high school students will have closed lunch. So I want to make sure that when students are in our care between, during school hours, that we're taking good care of them. So they will not be allowed to go out for lunch, they'll, they'll eat in the cafeteria or at school. And because, again, we're trying to limit the number of visitors in our campuses and our classrooms and lunch, we are not going to be allowing visitors during lunchtime at this, at this moment. For those who choose virtual, when we have the face to face option, we still have food for you as well. We'll have 17 designated sites for curbside meal pickup for breakfast and lunch. The same rules apply. That will be a daily pickup for meals. Again, if we're face to face and you're virtual, you can pick up meals every single day, and you can warm those up at your home. So our human resources team has also been surveying and trying to provide supports for our staff members. You taught, you heard about our, our parent survey earlier. So we've had 6,300 responses to our staff survey to ask them if we begin school today, how many of you plan to return, you know, when we're planning different, we have to have an idea. So 91% of the respondents said they planned to return when we surveyed, which was just a few weeks ago. However, almost all of them would work virtually if they're able to. Majority of our respondents were not comfortable going back into the buildings at this time. And two thirds of them would, time if they could, or choose an alternative setting. But human resources is making sure that they're providing lots of opportunities for support and accommodations if there are folks who need to apply for any type of leave or have support in that aspect. So in considerations of the CARES Act compliance, considering there may be virtual instruction alternatives for our staff members who are unable to return face to face. And they'll look at any other accommodations or any other alternative assignment opportunities for staff members who may be unable to return when we do go back face to face. As far as substitute employee initiatives, we all know how important it is that we have high quality substitutes also supporting our students. And so we have a substitute return to work survey in progress right now that's been generated by HR to get an idea of if we do have a percentage of teachers who are unable to return when it's time for face to face, we'll be able to know kind of what gaps and coverage we might need so we can leverage our substitute teachers in that aspect. They've been very proactive in emailing, reaching out to substitutes, even those who've made an application but has never, have never subbed, we're still reaching out to them too, to see if they're interested. And then when we get to those postings for substitutes, we're going to see like who, who, out of those who applied, how many of you are interested in virtual substituting or in person? So we'll have an idea of who we're working with in our pool. And then, of course, and yet we have some additional substitute recruiting initiatives in progress. We're still offering long-term substitute incentives for those who are in, in, in a setting for a certain period of time and an extended period of time, I should say. So HR is working diligently with our staff members to make sure that if they are unable to come back in a face to face setting, they will be supported through that process. So with that, we're going to start part two of our conversation. That's Dr. Wertz, our chief academic officer, and he'll be talking about our learning models.
Good evening, President Mays, members of the board, and Dr. Cavassos. Thank you for letting us be here this evening to share some of the work that's been happening behind the scenes with our task force. As Dr. Brown mentioned, there have, there have literally been dozens and dozens of people working on, on preparing for our students to return. And my, my object or goal this evening is to share with you some information specifically around the learning models. And Dr. Brown's going to drive for me since we're managing the presentation from her, from her computer. So the first thing I wanted to emphasize is what options that we will have. There are in-person classes, and then there are online classes. And as Dr. Cavassos mentioned on the onset of this meeting, it really depends on the safety of our students and our staff in terms of which options are available. It's very likely, as Dr. Cavassos said, that we may start class online. But there may be some opportunities for, an opportunity for students to begin to slowly come back to school and eventually be in person. So I'm going to highlight what that scenario will look like when it occurs and what parents can expect when they're in the online environment and working with their students at home. So this is a slide that will actually be part of a parent guide that we will be publishing here shortly. And I'll have some more information about that at the end of this presentation. But this page basically tries to provide a quick overview about what the community can expect and students can expect in each of these two environments. We have two learning models, of course, that we're working through. One is in person, and in-person learning will happen very much, or would happen very much the way we would expect it with all the things that Dr. Brown just shared in terms of safety protocol, but happen at school in a face to face environment. And so if you were signing up to go to in-person learning, then you would be subject to implementing those safety protocols so that you can engage in learning in a safe way. The online environment or a virtual environment is intended to mirror as much as possible what would happen in the face to face environment. Students would be engaged in the same rigorous curriculum that would happen in a face to face environment. There would be opportunities for teachers to engage in live, small group and individualized instructions with students, guided lessons, for example, and actual expectations for performance in grades. And everything that you would normally expect when you're in the in-person environment would be in play in the online environment. The only difference primarily is the way we take attendance, the way the instructions actually delivered, and, and the way students would engage in the learning process. And I'm going to spend some time tonight going through that in a little more detail. So the big question that everyone wants to know initially is if everyone goes online, how does that happen? And as you know, at the beginning of this pandemic, we surveyed students and we created a space online where families could request devices if they needed. And we filled every request that we received and checked out approximately 24,000 devices to our students in the spring. And all of those devices are still in the hands of our students to have, to be used over the summer for summer courses and also for the fall. In our system, we have approximately 60,000 devices across the district. These devices are sitting, some in our students' hands, some of them are at the schools for classrooms. And so we do know that we have the right number of devices, or at least the number of devices needed for our students to engage in online learning. What we will adopt in terms of the district is something called a district-centric model, which will allow us to really consider the life cycle of a device, how, which, when they need to be replaced to ensure that students have devices in their hands that are going to allow them to engage in quality learning. We have already purchased 47, 100 devices, which is about 20% of the amount of devices that we distributed in the spring. And another 12,000 have been, have been purchased in order to replenish on some of the supplies that we know kids are going to need for the fall. The important thing to note is that we are one of many, many, many districts across the country that are ordering these devices from the same suppliers. Some states have ordered a million plus devices for their, for their schools. So as you can, as you can imagine, there is some, some possible delay in their delivery. Our goal is to leverage at a minimum the devices we do have in the system so that our kids can begin learning on day one. Some of the things that we have been working on in response to this device issue is we've been collaborating with the TA Operation Connectivity Program, ordering up to 5,000 devices through this connectivity program. We've ordered 5,000 hotspots to ensure that students who struggle not only with the device, but with connectivity at their homes can have access to that. And also ordered additional 200 iPads. We have some students that actually, like our pre-K, for example, that all manage their learning directly through the iPad. We've also worked to rebalance our plan to develop how we're going to replenish our schools so that we can really maintain at least 75% capacity per school upon return. We will repoll parents, as you know, and Dr. Brown had mentioned on the onset, we have started the registration process, and in that process, we have polled parents about what, what type of learning they prefer. We will repoll parents in school meant again to understand what their device needs are. And then we will plan another distribution date so that all students will be able to have access to a device in their hands to begin school when we open. Students that have checked out their devices, from, that have already checked out their devices, will transport them to and from school for learning. So for example, once we check out devices to students, we will have exhausted all of our devices. So when students return back to school or come back to the in-person environment, they will need to bring their device with them so that they have access to that device. And then when they go home, or should we have some need to close temporarily in the future, they can then take their device with them again so they can maintain that same device that's checked out to them. A new student support portal will be developed and launched for device and application support should a student or a family member find themselves struggling with their device in terms of its functionality at home. The district is going to heavily, heavily market the need for bring your own device. As you know, we do have a BYOD policy in place that we've had across the district for many years. There are many families that do have access to devices, and we're going to encourage families who have a device at their disposal to go ahead and plan to use that as part of our reopening strategy. The tech support and communications department will be collaborating with the, with each other to develop a marketing campaign that will allow parents to understand specifically when and how they can pick up their devices and how to leverage their own device should they have one. Tech support will also be working to ensure that the network, the filtering, and any other considerations that have to be taken into, into account proactively are addressed so that students can engage in learning. And then, of course, our instructional technology department, which we call TI squared, will continue to provide and guidance to classroom teachers for how to manage the BYOD policy that we know students are going to be engaging in probably more robustly when they begin to come back to school. So what would in-person learning look like? When we think about in-person learning, especially in this environment, well, one of the things that we really planned for is the idea that students could at any moment in time be required to go back home for a number of reasons. It could be because we have to do a whole school closure. It could be because a student was infected for some reason, and we had to move the entire classroom home for a couple of weeks. So in terms of the in-person learning, we will be adopting what we call a blended learning structure where students will engage in the same learning that's happening at home online, but they, that, that online learning will serve as the basis for what the teacher engages with students in an in-person environment. One of the things that we have really been working on is we know that when we closed in March, we had to do so suddenly. And as was mentioned earlier in the meeting, we had some runway, which has been great in terms of planning. And so what the team has developed is something called the Connected Learning Framework, which is the set of standards, and I will share with some of those with you this evening, that will be used with teachers to help design and increase the quality of lesson planning and lesson delivery to students that will happen in the online environment. While the Connected Learning Framework really is focused on how to engage students in high-quality learning in the online environment, those same standards are very applicable to the in-person environment. So when students come to school, while their teacher will still be engaging with them in a very much face to face environment, they will continue to follow the same sequence and continue to engage in the same activities that we would expect students to be doing at home online. All students will continue to participate in this daily, and we will use the LMS that we have had in the past, CSO for primary grades, so that would be pre-K, Kinder, and first and second grade. And then our grades three through 12 will engage in Canvas as our LMS. And then, of course, teachers will have the opportunity to bring students that are at home in their, in the virtual environment into the classroom when they're doing guided reading and guided lessons or periodic direct instruction. So if I have students that are in front of me that I'm teaching in a face to face, in-person environment, I will also have a schedule where I know specifically when I'm doing a small group instruction, which students are going to then be brought into a classroom virtually to engage in direct instruction for me as a teacher in a small group environment. The other type of learning that we'll have, so the way I just mentioned the in-person, the online person is called, is asynchronous learning. When I use the terms throughout the presentation, synchronous would be considered live, kind of what's happening right now. Asynchronous would be not live, which means that some of the teaching may be reported. There'll be activities and, and instruction that's provided in a, in a way that allows students to speed up their learning or slow it down based on their individual needs. But I wanted to describe what those two terms mean because I'm going to use them periodically throughout the presentation. In the asynchronous learning environment, which is the environment that we will have students learning in, in the online, virtual learning platform, students will engage in CSO. And they will have, they'll have CSO for pre-K through two and Canvas for three through- students will engage in CSO and they will have, they'll have CSO for pre-K through two and Canvas for three through eight. And they will be engaging their regular learning. While they are learning in an asynchronous environment, we do have our textbook materials that are consumable, that come with our adoption, which we will distribute to students so that they can engage in work in a paper-based way if needed. All those materials are also accessible and available online and will be embedded into their teacher's courses in Canvas. But should a student prefer to function or to learn in a paper-based environment, those materials will also be available to them and we will publish a schedule for when those can be picked up. We also are encouraging teachers to collaboratively plan with one another. As you know, we have, the majority of our courses and our grade levels are taught by multiple teachers. So for example, if I'm in an elementary grade at a school, I may have four teachers that are teaching grade three. If I'm in a high school, I might have multiple teachers teaching algebra one. What we're encouraging teachers to do is to collaboratively plan with one another in their scheduled PLC time, their professional learning communities, to design lessons and to design learning that they can share with one another. This will help minimize the need, the robust level of planning that has to happen when you're creating learning in the online environment. And it will also help to mitigate some of the variance that may, that parents and students may experience from teacher to teacher within a singular grade level or course at a specific school. Students will engage in daily instruction. And so the difference between the spring and the fall will be that students will be expected to log on and engage daily. We will not be providing students with all of their materials to learn in one week for the entire week all upfront and asking students just to work at their own pace. Students will be given assignments and know, should know what they're expected to complete each day. And, and also know exactly when they should be logging in to receive live instruction in the small, in small groups based upon their individual needs and their teacher's lesson plans. We are providing an opportunity for, at the campus level, for campus leadership to cluster group online students. And what we mean by this is when we are back to learning in person, we know that some families will still choose to leave their students at home learning in an online environment. To help mitigate the need to try to plan for instruction as a teacher from the online environment and the face-to-face environment, campuses can look at their, the number of students that have enrolled in the online environment within a specific course or grade level. And campus leadership can cluster group those students into one class and assign a teacher to teach all of those students online. And then redistribute the face-to-face students to the other teachers that are teaching face-to-face. This will allow for students to engage with the teacher online and to help mitigate some of the planning. As you know, it's impossible at the district level completely to make decisions about where a cluster grouping should happen because every campus will have a different number of students that are choosing to stay in the online environment. And that number will vary from course to course and grade level to grade level. So guidance and information will be shared with campus principals so that they can collaborate with their teachers to make the best decision to ensure that the learning that's delivered to their students in the online environment is, is done strongly and done well. What I want to share now is some screenshots of our Connected Learning Framework that we're using to design our instruction and to articulate what our expectations are for the type of learning that would happen in the online environment and when students come to school. As you can see, there are going to be several components. And as I go from slide to slide, I will articulate just the main areas. But I wanted to orient you to the page so you can see what you're looking at. And then I'll talk you through what the different components are. In the pink section at the top, you're going to see the major categories. And you're going to see me talk specifically around general practices, inputs, outputs. And then in the blue sections, the baby blue sections, you're going to see different subsections within that category. On the far right-hand side, we have recommended resources and hyperlinks. And so in the framework, what will happen is when teachers click on the hyperlink, they will have resources available to them to help them in their implementation of that specific strand that's there. So for example, at the very top of this page, you can see 1.1, the general practices are around course and classroom structures. And the specific area within course and classroom structures are making sure that we design content activities in a way that are organized in a clear, consistent way, so they're easy for students to navigate. This is an expectation that we will want to ensure happens for our students when teachers are planning lessons. And so to help teachers to do that, there are recommended resources that are attached on the right-hand side in that hyperlink to help them. If we go to some of the other sections, you'll see there's communicating effectively. There's how to create a safe, supportive and positive learning environment for students. And there's many subsections under there, including maintaining, establishing a classroom culture, how do you do routines, procedures? How do you plan for positive and frequent teacher-to-student interaction in online environment? And how do you even have strategies to help students to receive that feedback and acknowledge their behaviors in alignment with your expectations? There's many components in general practices. On the next slide, what we'll talk about, you'll see that there are other things like inputs. So for example, when we think about inputs, these are, what are the things that are actually being provided to help design the actual lessons that students are going to engage in? So for example, how do you build engagement in the online environment? What are the targets, the learning targets kids will be engaged in? How are those communicated effectively? How do you, how do you get kids hooked into learning? What's some, what's an activity or, or a resource you can use to help them find a relevant connection between the new topic you're about to introduce and their prior knowledge or their own experience? What's some ways that you can do feedback? How do you pre-assess their learning so students are spending time engaging learning they already know? And then, of course, we share information about how to deliver content, how to make sure it's well-designed, well-organized. How do you make sure it's accessible to students? And then, of course, those resources are also being populated for our teachers to leverage. Another section that you'll notice is around processing and storing. So how do teachers check for students' understanding and their, their content? How do they provide them, students with timely feedback? And how do you provide space for students to engage in independent practice and intervention? And for students who need extension to their learning, who are, are advanced or ready to move on, how do we create an opportunity for them to be independent and self-paced so they can engage in learning opportunities that reinforce their own skillset? The guidance specifically around how to process and store information in the online environment for students is also being provided as part of our learning framework. You can see that this continues on the next slide with guided practice and how to create groups for targeted practice for students who may need that. Finally, the section that we wanted to outline was the output section on, if you go back, yeah, there we go. And there are two specific areas in the output section that we're talking about. And one is how do we, how do we set up a situation where students can demonstrate their learning? As you know, students demonstrate learning in a variety of ways. It's not always in a paper-based, multiple-choice exam. And we want to make sure that if students are learning in the online environment, they have lots of ways to have their, their learning assessed. And that could be provided in a variety of ways, including activities. It could be in projects, opportunities to collaborate, and it also could be an assessment. And so we're providing some guidance on what those outputs could look like. And then finally, we do believe in Arlington, the power and the need for students to engage in ownership of their own learning and to reflect on the learning that they have engaged in in comparison to where they want to go. So as part of that process, when we facilitate learning in the online environment, we want to help students think about, where am I? Where am I headed in terms of my learning and did I get there? And what are some of the next steps I need to set for myself or goals I need to set for myself in order for me to achieve my, the outcomes that I'm desiring? So some guidance on how teachers can facilitate even student reflection in the online environment is being provided. When students are engaged in the virtual online environment, there are specific number of minutes that the Texas Education Agency have outlined that are required in the asynchronous learning schedule. As you'll note here, for a full day pre-K, it's a hundred and eighty core instructional minutes, for kinder through fifth grade, a hundred and eighty, and then six through twelve, two hundred and forty core instructional minutes. In Arlington, we are adopting these minutes in the schedule that are related to core academic learning. Additional minutes will be added to schedules for specials and electives or any kind of UIL sports or fine arts that students choose to participate in. When the learning begins in the fall, what we will be asking teachers to do in their courses is to publish their schedules so that parents know exactly what students are expected to engage in each day and also which, what their teacher's schedules look like. And so if I'm in, if I'm in elementary school, I will be able to, as a parent, know when math, reading, social studies and science are being taught, when my child should log in to participate in small group instruction or even in their gifted and talented learning blocks. If I have a student that's in special education or receives special services, exactly when that will occur. And so those daily assignments and expected tasks will be outlined for families. We also know that students will need individualized help and assistance in tutoring, just like we do in a normal face-to-face environment. So each campus will be developing a live synchronous tutoring schedule that will allow students to, who need additional assistance, to receive live synchronous instruction from teachers in an after-school tutoring environment. When it comes to athletics, we know that there are some things that are definitely better taught in a face-to-face environment. Students who choose to engage in a virtual environment at home will be allowed to still participate athletics. We have a couple of scenarios that I'm going to describe tonight that are, that are related to both fine arts and athletics. So in the event that schools close and face-to-face instruction or face-to-face engagement in athletics or fine arts is not permissible, we will continue to provide learning through the virtual environment. If however, a student, we are back in school and we have some students that are face-to-face and some are at home, but a parent or family chooses to keep their child at home in the online environment for their academics, but really wants them to still participate in athletics, students will be able to choose to come to school just to participate in their athletic course, if it's UIL, a UIL athletic class, and then return home for the rest of their schedule. So students virtually, basically have a few section, a few opportunities. They can either stay home completely, go to school and be face-to-face completely, or they can choose to show up to school just for their athletics classes and then go home for their online environment. In fine arts, it's a very similar scenario where they can do either of those two things. The setup will be exactly the same. But we also have work to try to improve the quality of online instruction for students in the fine arts area by successfully practicing a beta test in this, in, in, in one of our schools in the spring to get a sense of how can we really provide opportunities for students to engage, engage in online modules and practice with their, with their fine arts teachers in a way that's going to be productive while they're still trying to learn their instruments at home. And so we will intend to improve those modules, the ones that we implement for junior high and high school, when we come back in the fall. We have not yet received guidelines from UIL. Those will be forthcoming. And so right now, as of yet, Arlington ISD has not canceled their competition season yet. But we will be providing updated information once we have that from UIL. The question about attendance is one that many have. And attendance is really divided into two sections. We have our average daily attendance, which is basically our, the way we acquire state funding. So it's tracking students each day to ensure that they engage in learning. And that is a way for us saying that they were present. So if you were to go back to school in a regular environment, when we take our, our attendance, for example, in period two, that one specific period is used to identify that a student is present for the day. And that is used to gather what we call average daily attendance. And that will still continue in the fall, starting on the very first day of school. Daily attendance will be taken of all students. The other portion of attendance is the ninety percent attendance rule for credit. TDA requires that students participate in a minimum of ninety percent of their scheduled course time in order to receive credit. And even if a student passes a course, completes all of the coursework, but fails to complete ninety percent of the attendance required for that course, they cannot receive credit by TA guidelines. And so we will be taking attendance like we would normally do in a face-to-face environment, in the asynchronous environment as well, to ensure that students receive credit and earn their ninety percent attendance. It will be taken daily. So students that are in the elementary environment, their attendance, their daily attendance that they take will be taken. But also in the secondary, just as in a face-to-face environment where you would take attendance every single period to ensure that students are sitting in the course and participating in the learning, we will do that in the online environment. TA has specified very specific rules around what is considered attendance. And they define it by something called daily progress. And so in order for a student to earn credit for attendance on any given day, a student must meet one of the following three criteria to be counted present for that class for that day. The student must either, there must be information in the, in our learning management system, so specifically in CSO or Canvas that shows that the student made progress in their learning that day. The student has to demonstrate progress in their learning as evidenced by the interaction that he or she is having with their teacher. Or the student must complete and submit some assignment that was planned for that day. If a student meets any one of these three criteria, they will be counted present for the course for that day and that credit will be counted towards their ninety percent rule. So in a nutshell, the best way that I can say these, say this is if we can tell that the student has been engaging in learning for that specific course online that day by looking at the system, if the, if the student has engaged or interacted with the teacher in some way, or if the student has submitted an assignment that day, that student will be counted as present. When it comes to grading and progress monitoring, we will be implementing our grading policy that's very, that our traditional typical grading policy that we have in place every year. Students will participate in all of our screeners, our curriculum assessments, our final exams, any exams that their teachers create. Students will receive number grades as they always have. And students in primary grades will receive their standards-based report cards the way that they always have. And these numeric grades and upper grades will be counted towards their GPAs. And they will also be counted in the calculation of class rank. We are designing guidance to teachers to help communicate how to really focus on mastery. And how can we begin to ensure that our course grades reflect the level of mastery our students are, are obtaining and the progress they're making in their course? And that will be coming out for teachers. But in terms of grading and progress monitoring, we will not be engaging in a pass/fail scenario like we did in the spring. Students will be, will receive grades, numeric grades, grade point averages and class ranks as is stipulated in board policy. For students that are in special education or are English language learners, we will still be providing services. And as you know, when it comes to special education, the, the needs of each student is very, very individualized. And so our committees will continue to meet like they always do and develop a student's individual education plan and a schedule of services. And we will implement that schedule of services based on the recommendation of the art committee. Depending upon what the student's individual needs are, those services may be provided to the student in an asynchronous environment or a synchronous environment. And students that are engaged in our bilingual program or who are qualified for receiving instruction in an ESL environment will continue to receive those services in those environments from their teachers, where those strategies will be integrated into their learning day. Now, we recognize that many questions may come up regarding our specialized schools. And we noticed that on even some of our, our parents' comments this evening. And those are very justifiable questions, especially since so much of our learning is dependent upon a face-to-face environment. And so we thought we would share some of our initial planning specifically around these schools. For Arlington Collegiate High School, or Arlington Career and Collegiate High School, our two early college high schools, or students that participate in the STEM Academy at Martin, all their courses that they take at TCC will be provided online. TC has made a decision that they will not be providing face-to-face instruction to dual-credit students in the fall. Students at the STEM Academy at Martin, or students at the early college high schools that participate in UTA courses will need to log into their MyMabs account where they'll see that, where their courses are, are being, what, what type of model their course is being delivered in and choose whether they're going to engage in the face-to-face learning with UTA or whether they're going to do the online learning. UTA has not made, as you heard this evening, any unilateral decisions that every course will be taught online. And so students will need to make a decision around what type of environment they want to engage in, in terms of their UTA course. For PRC and Crowe Academies, students will engage online like, like all the other schools and their programs will be delivered in that environment unless we come back to school. And then for our Corey Jones and Wimbush World Language Academy, and our Corey and Jones is dual-language and fine arts. And then for our Corey Jones and Wimbish World Language Academy, um and our Corey and Jones Dual Language and Fine Arts, uh we will, we are working to develop a schedule and a model that will allow students to engage in direct synchronous instruction in the target language. So as you know, in that environment, right now, the dual-language environment is fifty-fifty. And so we recognize that students learning that target language need a model. Um meaning a fluent um native speaker who can speak that language to the children and help them um to learn content in a language that's not their first language. And that is not ideal in an asynchronous environment. So we will be working with the leadership at the um dual-language program schools to develop schedules that will allow students to engage in both the asynchronous environment um for some of their content and the synchronous environment for some of their other content. Um it will not be equated exactly the same probably as fifty-fifty um simply because um we know that students can't spend hours and hours um watching someone on the computer, especially in very, very young grades. But we will, um our goal is to provide opportunities for students to engage and receive that language model that they would, that they are going to need. C T E and workforce internships are a bit unique um in that they require specific software and also uh specific equipment in some cases. Uh and so our approach to C T E coursework, which I'll start with, is very similar to fine arts and athletics. Um students who can engage in C T E courses specifically all online um will be able to do so. Uh and then students who choose to come face-to-face when that's available will be allowed to do that as well. In fact, we will invite them. However, there will be some students who will choose to do their academics in the online environment, but really want to persist in their C T E coursework. But there are some courses which we simply cannot offer purely in an online environment and then teach the standards that are required because of the need for the equipment or and or the software. So students who are in the online environment will be able to choose, similar to athletics and fine arts, um to continue to stay enrolled in a course in, and come to the school, either the high school or the C T C, to participate in that course where they can have access to that specialized software or specialized equipment. And then do the rest of their, their learning on ho- at home in the online environment. For very few limited courses, this is the situation. And so if we do have students who choose to stay home one hundred percent online and not come back to school during the school year, but do the entire year or entire semester online. Uh and even when school reopens, are not interested in coming back to um work with the specialized equipment. They will, the counselors will reach out to those students and they will need to work with their counselor to, to make an alter, uh to alter their schedules so that they can um find a different course that matches the kind of environment they want to engage in. Um but I want to reiterate that this really is mainly only a situation for students who are engaged online for the duration. If we are closing school at the beginning or starting school in the online environment where we anticipate that period to be finite, meaning only for a few weeks or however long we're required that we planned it by people back to school. We are not asking students to change their schedule. Um but if a student knows that they indefinitely plan on staying in the online environment, regardless of whether the class um opens again in the in-person environment, um we are going to ask them to change their schedule so they can engage in coursework that's aligned to that space, that virtual space. When it, when, with regards to internships, uh we are collaborating with health officials to stay aligned with what's required in the business field. Um so students that are engaged in working uh internships that are in the business community, uh we, if, if the health uh restrictions and state restrictions allow for their engagement uh and if there are specific health protocol that they are required to, to do and their parents and uh and they choose to continue in those internships, uh they will be permitted to do so as long as the, the state and health restrictions are, are, are adhered to. Finally, uh as we know, learning is not just about academics or fine arts or athletics. It's also about what happens on the inside of us. And so we've been very cognizant about the needs that our students and families may have that are social or emotional in nature. And so we are working to provide resources so teachers can build lessons when students come back to school to really uh facilitate relationship building within their class group. Uh students will still have access to guidance lessons. We are going to invite counselors to continue to provide those guidance lessons to students in a synchronous environment. And uh and the schedules will be shared with families. And we also know that there are students who may need to participate in individual or group counseling or may, who may need academic advising. And so um published office and consultation hours will be available so that students have access to their counselors and are able to um work with them as needed. And then if there are specific family hardships that our students' families are experiencing or if, if, if there is homelessness that's uh being endured, uh we will be providing in our parent guidance documents, specific contact information so that families can reach out and receive help from, from the system uh that, and from the resources that we have available. So how is this all going to happen? Um and of course, uh as you know, it happens because we have an amazing staff and teachers who are very committed. And so we've been working hard to consider how best to prepare our families um to receive learning and our teachers to deliver it. And so you'll notice here on this slide that there are two approaches that we're working on. One is training of staff internally and then also providing opportunities for parents to engage in training um should they choose to. So we are um creating a professional learning calendar where we will be introducing the Connected Learning Framework to our teachers. Um we have had multiple um training sessions uh around our new curriculum that we are rolling out next year, our text resource system. And that has been going on since um, since April. Um we've had teachers engaged in that learning. And then we've also had many, many optional um trainings that have been available to teachers around how to in- interact in many content areas and do so within our environments of Seesaw or Canvas. Um we are going to be republishing um more dates that uh teachers can engage in should they choose to um during their summer months. And then we will increase that time or outline that time very specifically also when they come, when teachers return back on contract, uh which I'll share with you in just a minute. The important part of that training is it's not designed just to front-load. What we really want to do is partner with teachers and also to develop a schedule that allows people to absorb information and then put it into practice. Um many of us have been to trainings where we receive lots of information. And then when we go back to our classrooms, it's difficult to put everything into practice all at one time. And so what we've been really intentional about trying to do is to pace this out so that teachers have a chance to learn um new information, put it into practice, learn a little more, and put it into practice. Very similar to the way we would teach our students. And so a planning and coaching support plan has been designed, uh which I will share. Uh I really want to spend a minute also focusing on this idea around parent training opportunities. Uh we will be publishing a schedule uh and this, these training opportunity, opportunities will include um interacting with Canvas, learning about Seesaw, uh learning about how to become engaged with your teachers, um how to help support um the learning at home and specific things that pe- families can do. So we do know that in this environment, whenever we're in an online environment, it's going to require the partnership of families. And we want to provide as much support to parents as possible. So we will be publishing information about that here shortly as well. Now, the framework that I went over at the beginning of this portion of the presentation, as you can see, had many, many indicators. And as I was mentioning, um we know that it's not possible to learn everything all at once. Many of these things, teachers do regularly. Um but we also know that we want to have a minimum baseline expectation for what happens in terms of online learning. So there's a, a quality baseline across the district in terms of how kids are experiencing uh classroom instruction. So this is just one screenshot a, of a prioritization plan that the team has put together. Uh you'll notice that we have looked at all the indicators in each of the four categories on the learning framework and prioritize what things we will be engaging and teaching teachers before school starts. And then what things we will continue to engage in with teachers over the course of the first semester. So if you'll go to the next slide, what you'll notice is um a, a screenshot of our, uh, our plan. So this is an example of how we intend to roll it out. Uh every two weeks during P L C time, teachers will be, have opportunities to engage in learning and planning time with each other to design instruction. And what we will do is we will be highlighting very specific practices that are part of that framework and teaching those practices in these P L C times with teachers and then giving them time to put those things into practice before we introduce new topics. So for example, on this sample, you'll see in the first two weeks, we're going to be focusing on classroom structures, communicating effectively, maintaining routines and procedures, building engagement, delivering content, checking for understanding, and then how students demonstrate learning. And what I want to highlight on this slide is there's a couple of things that we've, we've emphasized in terms of prioritize, prioritizing. In the general practices side, our effort is to prioritize things that will build classroom culture and environment. The other three columns are really about pedagogy, teaching and learning, the kind of experience kids have when they're actually engaged in the learning process. For, in Arlington, it was really important for us that we did not just focus only on routines and procedures and navigating through a management system. What we wanted to make sure is that our students are being engaged in learning that is high-quality. And so what we want to do is support our teachers the best of our ability to design content in a lot, in an online environment that facilitates a high-quality learning experience for, for students. Um many teachers have been doing online learning for quite some time in their classrooms, but many also have not. It's new for them. Um are, the, the range of skill set between teachers ve- very, is varied across our district in terms of proficiency in providing instruction in the online environment. And so our goal um in our learning framework timeline is to bring is all of our teachers up to speed to a minimum baseline to ensure that not only is there quality structures put in place to ensure that kids can communicate well with their teachers and that there's routines and expectations, but also so that the teaching-learning process um is one that supports rigorous learning and strong outcomes. So this is a draft professional learning calendar that we wanted to share um that has been published or we will be publishing it. Um you'll notice here it's a little varied from the way we had started um when we developed the calendar at the beginning of the spring when we uh published earlier. Um what you're going to notice here is some differences. Um we, as you know, in the calendar, there's many, we had additional days that we had initially added to the calendar around teacher preparation. Teacher preparation days still exist, but what we need to do now in our, in, in light of our current circumstance is to learn to prepare online, not, not necessarily preparing our classrooms. So what we really wanted to do is prioritize the learning that teachers would need to engage in to be prepared for um delivering online instruction and also prioritize time that's protected where they can design that instruction and be given support while they're doing it. So what you'll notice is on the sixth of August, um there will be a campus-based professional learning day that campus principals will be responsible for. And in that day, um teachers will receive guidance around operations and many other things um that will help them in terms of implementing going back to school. On the seventh and the tenth, um we will be offering district uh remote learning. So teachers will engage in training that will be directly connected to the learner framework that I just described. And they will receive about a half a day of training. And then the second half a day, they will be implementing or designing uh instruction around those components that they were taught during that day. And it's broken down very intentionally to only a couple of, a couple of subs- uh sub um items uh each day. So we're not trying to introduce ten things at once. They will learn, for example, on August seventh, two areas that are directly related to building routines and expectations. And then they will have the opportunity, teachers will have the opportunity afternoon to actually embed those into their courses. And then the next day, we will introduce a couple more topics and then they will work embedding those into their courses and so forth. That will happen on August seventh. And then on Monday, when they come back on the tenth, we will do that again. On the eleventh, we will engage in a third day of training uh in a similar fashion with secondary while elementary teachers are engaged in district-wide professional learning, uh which is really connected to the implementation of new curriculum. And then on the twelfth, we'll flip-flop that. And elementary will engage in the remote teacher training that's really focused around the Connected Learning Framework. While the secondary teachers are receiving district-wide professional learning that's focused on the, uh, on the learning that's connected to um the curriculum, the text resource system that we're implementing. On the thirteenth, um it's a, it's another open day. Teachers will engage either professional learning day from their campuses or they, their principals could give that to them as a professional learning design day. And they can use that entire day to design instruction. And then of course, the fourteenth is also a prep day. The other note that, thing that I would like to note about all of this is we recognize that the week before school starts is um, is not soon enough. Uh so one of the other things that we will be doing is um providing uh training available, training times that teachers can engage in um on their own prior to this time, so starting the beginning of August. And we will also be working with campus principals to find time for teachers to begin um in their own design work so they can begin um preparing for students to come back to school. And as you know, and Dr. Brown mentioned this at the very beginning, we will continue to consult with our health officials to make sure that we know when is the right time to institute each of these two uh types of environments, whether it's all virtual, coming face-to-face or having some in virtual and some face-to-face. Um but our goal right now is to open our doors on August seventeenth. And if we can't open our doors on August seventeenth, as Dr. Cavassos said, um mentioned, our, we will begin instruction on that day in the virtual environment. I wanted to share with you also just a couple of screenshots from the Return to School Guidebook that will be published um tomorrow uh for families to get some more details. Uh this guidebook will be in conjunction with uh a website where uh parents and families will be able to dive into many, many of the details or weeds uh connect to each of their uh questions that they may have in terms of on, uh, on, uh, onboarding their child to school again. Uh you'll notice that my, Dr. Cavassos has some uh announcement that he shared. We go over uh many things in the book, including the guiding principles, um our task force, some of the P P E and safety protocols. And you can see here, we outlined for families very specifically um what they can expect in terms of face coverings, um disinfection uh of buildings and any of the other things that are needed, including social distancing to ensure that our students and families are safe when they're at school. So this, uh, these will be available online and um, and that'll, they'll be published tomorrow. And then of course, there'll be a website that families can dive into deeper uh should they have more specific questions um related to some of these items um that they'll find in the handbook. So those are that, those are the details of our presentation. Of course, Dr. Brown and I are here and happy to answer any questions.
Dr. Brown, Dr. Wertz, thank you very much for this presentation. Um I will add more comments later. At this time, I will open um the mic for any of my colleagues that have any questions related to either of your presentations. So if you want to talk right now from my screen, I don't see everybody. There we go. Okay, colleagues, anyone have a question? No que- yes, Dr. Raj.
I, I, I believe probably everybody has a bunch of questions. I was waiting for others, but I'll go ahead and leave because nobody was making the, the go at it. So um I have several questions. I've tried to divide them uh between uh Dr. Brown and, and, and Dr. Wertz. So uh, Dr. Brown, I'll, I'll uh I'll start with the things that I think fall under the areas that you presented on. And before I do that, to both of you, thank you. Uh tremendous, tremendous work. It, it is uh, uh, very obvious that there's been a lot of time and a lot of thought that has gone into this for a long time. And uh knowing that we have, I, with all this, still just been presented at surface level essentially. So I, I commend everybody the, in the district. You guys are doing an amazing, amazing job in uh long-term and emergency response. So uh, thank you for that. The uh, and I'll, I'll try to go through these and not jump around too much. So I, I guess one of the uh, one of the easier questions, and this is a little bit into the weeds, but I'm, I'm curious with uh regards to the uh, the P P E uh that will be supplied uh for availability for students and staff and in, in the classrooms. So I have two questions a- at this point. One is what, what seems to have been a very successful model in A I S D is, is setting up standards. And so my question is, is there a, if you will, a classroom standard for the allotment amount in elementary, junior high and high school classrooms? So we'll start there.
Thank you for that question, question, Dr. Raj. Um we are asking, we'll be asking students and staff members to bring their own face coverings, to wear a mask to school. Um we will have plenty on hand at all of our schools in the We will have plenty on hand at all of our schools in the event that a mask breaks or a student doesn't have one or a staffer visitor doesn't have one. And so what we're doing is looking at the hundreds of thousands of masks that we do have and we're going to divvy those out between schools and then of course, continue to order those to make sure we have a stockpile.
Okay. And with the, more specifically like with the hand sanitizer, that, that's always something, you know, hand sanitizer, tissues, all of those things that teachers are always saying, please, 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 we need these. And by the, you know, first three weeks of school, they're done, they're out. So do, do we have a standard projected for distribution for each classroom as far as that goes? And do we have the stockpile to support it?
Yes, and I can actually share those most recent numbers with you, Dr. Raj, because we just got those actually just yesterday. So I will share with you and the numbers are, we have, we have quite a bit to start off with. So I'll tell you right now what we have in terms of just disinfect, just in terms of face shields, for example. We have about 8,000 face shields for students and staff members. We have for hand sanitizer, we have about 15,000 gallons of that to start with. And then we have thousands of spray bottles for classrooms as well so that we can refill those and just continue to get the sanitizer and fill those bottles for those classrooms.
Right.
So the thought is right now is that every single classroom would have access to the refillable bottles. They will have the hand sanitizer. Our plant services team has made sure that our classrooms and offices are outfitted with plenty of paper towels and soap and all those necessities they need to start the year.
Okay. And I, I would assume that, that there'll be the, the surveillance on the utilization for different grade levels, different classrooms. I, I guess to move towards maybe what would be an ordering standard or replenishment standard. Because I'm, I'm sure there's going to be situations where you're going to go, how did they go through all of that? So, okay.
And that's one of the reasons, sir, that we wanted to make sure we had the custodial team having additional folks in the daytime to be able to help not only clean, but monitor the supply chain and make sure we have what we need in those classrooms.
Right, right. And then I don't know if you have this information, but you know, we, we've heard pretty routinely that the, the TEA, as you mentioned, is going to be supplying a lot of these things for us. What does that look like as far as percent to what we are actually utilizing or going to project to be utilizing at this point?
I don't know about projecting to be utilized, but I can share with you what we've received from TEA so far, if that would be of interest to, to the team. So we have from TA, we received almost, we received about 6,300 gallons of hand sanitizer, 160,000 face masks for children, 96,500 non-surgical face masks. We've also got the reusable ones where they can be washed and the disposable ones as well. And we have about 500 thermometers that are on back order that TA is sending us, as well as additional face mask gloves. We have, looks like about 247,000 pairs of gloves that we can use for cleaning, disinfecting, to be able to, to keep our hands safe.
Right, okay. Well, that's.
So far.
That, that's, that's great. And it will be interesting to see how this all plays out as far as what has been generously allocated from the state versus what our utilization is. And of course, I'm looking at what we're going to need down the road. So that's great. So you mentioned face shields, but I didn't see in the, in the presentation, actual utilization of face shields. It was more face masks. So are we utilizing that? Is that just for teachers or certain populations? And then also you mentioned the Plexiglas dividers that would be in the reception areas at the schools. Is there any of that planned out within the classroom at all with, with students or the teachers or what? Can you explain that a little bit more?
Sure, I can talk about the first, answer the first question first about the face shield. You know, we have some students when they're engaging in like speech services or they're being tested for special education or for language, that it's important that the teacher is able to see their mouth and their movement, how they're forming words. And so the face shield for the student will allow the student's face to be covered, but still the teacher will be able to see the movement of the mouth to be able to monitor language, word choice and things like that. As far as the Plexiglas and shields, I don't know if Kelly might want to speak to this or Cindy. I do know right now that we want to make sure that's in the reception areas. I'm not sure of the plan for the classrooms at this moment.
Tracy, excuse me, Kelly, before you go, because I think it's a good context. Because we've asked that question, Dr. Raj. And so if Annette Minnery is, is on, Dr. Hill, or Annette, if you could come on. Annette Minnery is our coordinator of nurses and health services. And her task force in particular, because I asked the question about face shields versus masks and Plexiglas and things like that. And Annette, you had some insight into that and then we can sort of turn it over to Kelly.
Yes, sir. When we discussed the Plexiglas for in the classrooms with the task force, one of our concerns was that they're only effective if, if the person is directly behind it. And the probability is the students aren't going to stay directly behind them. And it's also going to be a disruption to the classroom environment. And since they're going to be expected to be wearing a face mask or a face shield during language arts, it would, it would be an unnecessary disruption to the classroom environment and not as effective as the face mask.
Thank you, Annette. And, and this, this also, if, if I may, gives me an opportunity also, Dr. Raj and board, to reemphasize some of the things that we talked about in the beginning, which is the reopening of our schools. When that happens, I'm not suggesting August 17th, but when that happens, we're going to look to our health professionals and our health authorities for that. And so Annette and her task force committee has been working with Dr. Simmons from Arlington Health Authority, for example, on the recommendations that they have put forward. And, and so I just, I want to reemphasize that because one of the things that we have been certainly very persistent about from the very beginning and is that we need to be able to manage the occupancy of our buildings. The district needs to be able to manage that. And TEA has not allowed that, quite frankly, until Friday for high school only, because they allow a hybrid. So when we talk about our health authorities locally and, and they weigh in on not only when we should open, but how we should open in the future, we're going to look to them to have proper class sizes and things like that based on the conditions so that we can appropriately social distance and things like that. So just, I think it's an opportunity to, to just kind of reinforce that as we go through this discussion. But I'll turn it back over. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. The, the other, some of the other questions I have for you, Dr. Brown. So when we are in person, will, will it look the same as far as the student mobility within the campus versus the, you know, some suggestions have been keep the student in the same place, let the teachers rotate in and out like they, like we have at our ninth grade center, like a university model typically is. What do, do we, and traffic flow, another example, unit direction versus what it is as we know it? What are, what would be happening regarding those factors?
That's also a great question. We've already started having some initial conversations about that with a task force of principals. Ideally, we would like to limit the number of transitions as much as possible. It's probably a little bit easier to do at the elementary campus versus the secondary level. However, depending on the size of the campus and the structures they put in place, they can allow for one-way directions, staggered bell schedules so that students are leaving classrooms at different times. Those are all considerations that we're putting in place for when we do return back to school. Just to limit the amount of interaction and the density in the hallways.
Sure, absolutely. Have we looked at any kind of staggered start times as well? I know that's another theory that's been out there to try to slow that flow down. Besides, which I think is great, having the specified entry points for different students.
Of course, that's an option. Also, we have to consider weighing with transportation because that may pose a different challenge too. So we really have all options on the table depending on when we do go back and how, and what kind of, what kind of requirements we're going to have.
Sure, sure. And that, that's real timely actually regarding transportation. What you, what you've lined out is, I, I don't know if people realize that it's really kind of a monumental lift to do the disinfection in between every single utilization of that bus for, for the population. So with that, so two things. One, transportation always is, is strapped. Everybody's always like, oh, you know, the, the bus, they've got, they're, they're there at this time. They've got to go because they've got the next place. So how does that usual chaotic type of scenario in, in scheduling, how does that match with what is likely going to be a slowing of that, those transition processes? What, what are we looking at there?
So, Dr. Brown, I, let me just interject again. Our goal would be to minimize and manage the number of people in our buildings. And so we can, we can better meet the protocols, including transportation, social distance, masks, cleaning and all that, when we can have some autonomy to, to manage the number of people in our building. So back to the hybrid model and things like that, that we can only do today in, in, in high school, we would certainly work with our health authority to allow us to, to, to make those kind of adjustments so that the numbers become manageable so that we can transport and we can, you know, I think Dr. Brown's committee, and this is preliminary, but we can, we can still talk about it, has looked at options related to buy cohorts by alphabetical or by alpha so that we keep siblings together, for example, with cohorts and hybrids and things like that. So I think, I think part of our, our approach when we do open is to not have the volume of, of a normal situation so that we can effectively implement our protocols. And quite frankly, and you've seen this in the data, when our protocols are compromised, and, and I use that word because that's sometimes what TA puts us in that position. People do not feel comfortable returning and things like that, not only to school, but to work and things like that. So it would be our expectation that with transportation, we would control the numbers with, with classroom size, with cafeterias, with gymnasiums and things like that.
Right, very good. The, the other question, I'm trying to just move along, not, not being rude and acknowledging what the responses are. So if, if a student or teacher is diagnosed, this is, you know, for the on-campus, you'd mentioned that, that classroom, you know, all the appropriate communications, et cetera, would happen. And the reopening of that class could occur within a one to five day, within one to five days. So, and that's kind of related to many questions that we've had. So does that mean, or we don't know yet, as far as protocols for, it, does that mean during that time, all of those people are, are still in school as far as students or are they not in school? Obviously, there's going to be a lot of situational, specific areas. But is there a, a general rule, and this goes to many of the comments, as far as so, as a teacher, does that mean my class is quarantined? In my quarantine, do I get sick leave or is there a quarantine thing? And, you know, this might be a little bit out of your realm, might go into Mr. Kales as well, but can you expound on some of that?
Yeah, we'll start with Ms. Minnery can talk about just the procedures when someone is diagnosed with COVID. And then if we want to jump to, to Scott afterwards, we can do that.
So, so Dr. Brown and Annette certainly will jump in. And I, I, I keep interjecting because I think it's important to just reinforce some of the points. But if we can control the numbers in our buildings, contact tracing becomes much more realistic. And shutting down becomes for a brief amount of time. It's when those protocols are compromised and quite frankly, by the agency saying that anybody who wants to come to school can come to school. That begins to compromise things because we can't control the numbers. So Ms. Minnery, I know we've had a lot of discussion about this. Would you take us through the steps on the contact tracing and how we would notify and things like that, please?
Yes, sir. If, if a staff member, a teacher or a classroom student is confirmed positive for COVID, anyone who is a contact of that individual will have to self-isolate for two weeks. So that means if they've been within six feet of that person for a cumulative period of 15 minutes for the three to five day period prior to them becoming symptomatic. And so we, we will really need to know who's been where in order to affect that contact tracing. So it, it potentially could be everyone in the classroom or just the teacher or half the classroom. We, we would have to do the, go through the process of doing the contact tracing. So it, it, it might with like a, a secondary teacher, if it was the teacher, it could be all the students who'd been in the front portion of her classes for every class period that she taught for a three to four day period. So, so depending on how much movement there's been and how large the classroom groups are, we could be talking about a large number of people who would need to go home for two weeks.
And those that would have to go home because, and this gets into Dr. Wertz's area, but I'm not, not there yet on questions. Because of the, the design of this model, those children would be able to continue on really without skipping a beat with this model, correct?
That's correct, Dr. Raj. And the other part of that is that the teacher, if they have to quarantine as well, could seamlessly, you know, assuming they, they stay healthy, would continuously serve online from home. And that's the, that's the goal with our instructional model as Dr. Wertz presented, to make sure we have high quality online learning delivered and received so that it can seamlessly go back and forth.
Right, right. Excellent. I, I do appreciate it. I think that's all the questions I have related to Dr. Brown. Dr. Brown's part of the presentation, so I'll transition over to Dr. Wertz. Thank you very much, Tracy. Appreciate everything that you're doing. So first off, yeah, regarding this model, this is essentially one that has not been discussed that I've heard of anywhere in other districts. Might be one other that I think I've heard, but I know that we have let out with, with this, basically mastering a single curriculum, a single syllabus that is the same whether the children are there in person or they're remote. And I think that's just such a fantastic thing that we really have to highlight. It, I think will relieve a, a ton of angst and stress on, on our teaching staff who they're, they're already at the edge all the time doing everything they do for our, our students. And this allows them to stay focused in one area of developing plans instead of multiple lesson plans. And of course, our priority is always on that learner, on that student. And it completely provides with that same team versus they may have one that would be in person and then a different one online. So they can still have the opportunity to build those relationships and, and, and have those greater opportunities for better achievement and better experience. I really want you coming up with that. And I think this is something that could be paying dividends into the future. This, I was thinking, this would be one of my latter questions, but I'll, I'll put it out there now. Is this model something that might be a permanent model then moving forward? Because I look at this as, you know, right now, we're in the opportunity to enhance our educational opportunity or access for our students. So, you know, take the politics and the funding and all that stuff aside. Is this something that we are addressing with all of this investment to move forward in a permanent fashion versus just now? And then at some point, we're going to revert back to what we're doing.
You know, it's interesting. I think one of the things that I've said often with even our team is that despite the fact that we're sitting in a pandemic, there is a silver lining. And the silver lining is that so much of our work has actually been accelerated by this in terms of the natural integration, use of technology to facilitate instruction and learning in the classroom. You know, in, for a long time, we have worked through the idea of getting past what we call a fan, we call it a technologically based worksheet, which is basically you're doing all the things you would normally do in paper pencil. You just put it on a computer and move more towards leveraging the tools to actually help facilitate the learning process. And that's really what I think is we're going to get out of this that will actually be long-term. Do I anticipate when we go back to regular, I suppose, like normal teaching, learning, that kids would just sit in front of a computer? No, we definitely want there to be more engagement than that, but. But in our, in our, in our learning framework that we engage with anyways, in the day to day environment, the active learning cycle, kids very much own their learning, they leverage technology tools to facilitate their learning process, but it's in collaboration with the teacher. And I think that's the important part that I would not want people to miss is the most important person in the classroom besides the student is the teacher. Meaning that is the, that is the most important person in terms of student learning. It's not a computer or any of that. So will, will we continue to leverage all we've learned on how to meaningfully integrate technology into the classroom and teaching, learning? Absolutely. Will we ever intend to space the teacher away from the student and use technology in their place? That's never our goal. Yeah. So, yeah, I think there, I think there are things we're definitely going to learn and will use in, in the future from this for sure. It, in fact, it's, they're not things we haven't already done, it's just accelerated it exponentially to be truthful. Yeah.
Yeah. And, and setting it up as a, a consistent model.
Right.
Helping you to define right now. So.
Yeah.
Absolutely. So regarding the, what is sounding like a, a more given than not, as far as August 17th, we may not be there in person. You, you were talking about the, the TEA operating connectivity project or something? Basically working them as far as the devices, the, the hotspots, all of that. The, the last thing that I've heard fr- from you as the district is we're, we're still back ordered, we're still backlogged on, on these things. So if we're starting August 17th, what, what do we have as far as that connectivity for those students? Cause that would be a concern.
So we ordered several thousand hotspots before, in the spring that, and we didn't use all of them. And we do have devices that are necessary, that we have enough devices for all the students to be engaged in learning. So we have, like I said earlier, 60,000 devices that succeeds our student enrollment. The back order that we do have is the same one that everyone has, which is we're trying to replenish our devices with newer devices. And that's what's on back order, but we do have devices to get schools started. In terms of hotspots, we, we, we have ordered hotspots, we also have hotspots that are leveraged. So one of the things we intend to do is to find out, most of our students have connectivity that we know because we've surveyed them. What we do want to know is has that changed since the pandemic began? Which, which students don't have connectivity and how we can facilitate that prior? And that's where that survey comes in on school meant that we're going to be asking families again so that we can make sure that when school starts, they're ready to go. They have their device, they have their consumables in hand, and they also have their hotspots if needed. And Eric Upchurch, the Assistant Superintendent of Technology is really the one facilitating this portion of our effort.
Right, right. Yeah. And, and thank you, Eric, for that. I know we haven't met in person yet. You joined our district at the right time. Thank you for all that you're certainly going through on a daily basis as well. So you talked about the, you know, the minutes and what to do with the core topics and kind of discuss the non, non-core topics as well. Will they basically still have the same guidelines as the core topics as far as for credit and, and graduation requirements and that type of thing?
They are. The graduation requirements and all the rules that normally aren't played during school have not been altered at all by TEA. So that's part of the reason why we're trying to provide as much flexibility to students, especially when we're in a hybrid situation where we may have some kids at school and some kids at home, but mom and dad want to keep their, their student at home. We also, we know that they, they'll still, they sell course requirements. And in some cases, those course requirements are best taught face to face. And so we want to provide opportunities for them to engage in that learning in face to face if they want to. However, for, for things, for courses that are directly connected to graduation requirements, we will provide virtual environments if a tutor, if a parent chooses to stay in that environment only. So specifically, I'm talking about fine arts and, and athletics. It's just the important thing to note is that your experience in the online environment is just different. It's, it's, you, I use athletics as a, as a common sense kind of example is it's very, what, what you're going to learn in athletics class online is going to be very different than what it feel like to actually be there face to face. But what we're not going to do is prevent you from earning the credit you need to graduate. We'll facilitate that in the virtual environment. The only exceptions to that really, which aren't even related to fine arts or athletics, it's really connected to CTE. There are some courses that are not required for graduation, they are elective, that students choose to participate in, that do have specialized equipment and specialized software. We do recognize that if you want to be in the online environment, but you still want that class, you may have to choose to come to school just for that one class and we will follow all the safety protocols. And then you go home and do the rest of your courses online. If that's not an option you want, we will counsel you to find a different course to meet your, your needs simply because we won't be able to deliver every course in an online environment in, in the CTE world. Some of them are very, as you know, workforce based and you just can't do it. So, but those, that list is very short.
Okay, okay. That's, that's great. Yeah, I know that's going to be a lot of, a lot of questions from a lot of students and parents. So what, what do those things look like? Things that we're so used to being traditional in person, we think, how, how can it possibly be?
What we will do, just for clarity too, is we will publish the list of courses that pertains to so that when a parent is making a decision, they know exactly, oh wait, my student actually enrolled in that class and I definitely am not sending them back to school long term. I know I need to, and the counselor's going to have to reach out to me or I'm going to reach out to the counselor. So that list is very short, but we're going to provide it so families are trying to guess is this class that I, my student enrolled in the CTE? Is this one, is this one, one of those courses or not? We're going to tell them upfront what ones those are.
Okay, that's great. Now, moving on to the social emotional aspect of this, you, you things down, laid them out pretty well. Some of my remaining questions is regarding our partnerships with our, our, our local professionals, our mental health professionals. With, with the American Academy Pediatrics, everything that has been out there in the data that kids need to be in school, we, we all know this. What, what, what are we doing to try to meet those needs we know that are out there right now with an online model?
So one of the things that we're doing is we have, we've worked on a cohesive plan to implement some of the strategies that we would normally engage in to build community in the school, in the online environment. And teachers will be provided with those resources and lessons. We're also going to make sure that students have access to their guidance lessons. So typically in an elementary school, for example, teach students engage monthly with their, with a counselor in a guidance lesson around some character trait or some other lesson. Those lessons will still be given, they'll be done in a synchronous kind of environment following a schedule. And then of course, our, our older students who their, their interactions with their counselors are usually more related to either individual group counseling or it's related to academic advising, we're making sure all those things are available. And all the resources that you referenced, the community resources are still completely at our disposal and at the disposal of counselors so that we can direct people to those resources as they need them. So all of that will be made available too. We will publish those also online so families know where they are and how they can find them.
Right. And, yeah, it'll be interesting. I know there's going to be, uh, parents, you, you mentioned the IEPs. For those that have, you know, 504 accommodations, dyslexia, that type of thing, online is a difficult situation. So I, I think we probably appreciate any additional information that you have on that necessarily.
Well, I can share with you a little bit about that. So as you mentioned, students who have qualified for specialized services, any, anywhere in that range, that 504 range or special education varies and is super individualized, which is the whole point of the service. So what we will do is the 504 committee and or the art committees will decide what are the concentrated areas of focus that that child needs to be successful during the year and whatever their area of learning is and in relationship to their disability. And develop a scheduled services that's, that, that will deliver the content in the way that meets their needs the best that we can. I'll give you an example, dyslexia, we know, for example, dyslexia is a service that students receive every day for 45 minutes. If a student receives dyslexia services, there will be a schedule that they're, that's published that they will receive that service outside of those core content minutes. So if I'm a student and I go to X Y Z elementary school, I am in a dyslexia program, I can expect to be in class during my 180 minutes. And I can also expect that I'm going to be participating in 45 minutes a day of learning with my dyslexia teacher actually receiving my service. And so what we've done as a system is we've mapped out all the scheduling requirements that identifies what are the requirements to meet each of the service providers' needs. And then we're providing that to campuses so that when teachers are developing their schedules, that those things are taken into consideration. So if Steven is a student, for example, as you've mentioned, has dyslexia, services that are normally provided him, I would know and my family would know when those are provided, which, which time of day I, I need to log in so that my teacher can actually access me and provide that instruction. For special ed services, for example, those students that are pullout or we would call resource, that time will be scheduled and the students will know when they're going to receive that service. In some cases, they can actually receive the accommodation or the modification within the asynchronous environment. But in other situations, they will need to be synchronous. And so that's going to be a collaboration between the two teachers to provide that to the student. But what we don't want to do is just say, oh, you, you're a student, you, we can't provide it in a synchronous way, so we're just not going to offer it. It's not free and appropriate education. And so we're going to make sure we try to meet those needs as best we can.
Okay. Thank you for that. I appreciate that. Certainly a challenging situation. What about the, the, you know, some of the efforts that, that we've put into play over the years? For example, our, our GT identification, our GT program, what does that look like?
So GT services will still continue. It'll function very much like I was just describing where they have, they have their pullout hour and they'll still receive that as enrichment. The thing that we have to be careful about is we, when it comes to specialized services, for GT, it's supposed to be an extension of their learning or an acceleration. And for other students who are in specialized services, it may be remediation or, or, or what, what it may be. What we don't want to do is supplant. So you can't, we, what we don't want to do is pull a student out of math instruction to give them math resource time or pull a student out of math instruction to give them gifted and talented time. You want them to have their full instructional time plus whatever they're supposed to be getting. That's the nature of the service. So those times will be scheduled. We also have other online resources. For example, that our GT kids actually engage in, it's an online platform that they normally would do in the general ed environment, which allows them to use, it basically assesses where their strengths are and builds specific activities based on those strengths. They can still engage in all those things, we'll just make them available at home. And then the teacher will assign those students the portions of things that they need to be working on. So their services should still function and their, and their courses should still be the same. Where that's, our goal is to try to get as close to what we normally would do at, at school in the, in the online environment.
That's excellent. Related to that, on the, the actual assessments, the summative assessments, do we have the, the remote proctoring capability set up within Canvas to do that?
We, you can, you can do all of that on Canvas where you can set those things up. We also are working through academic honesty software that we're embedding into our coursework to help encourage students to be academically honest and to discourage plagiarism in assignments. So all of that is also being looked at and, and, and embedded into our, you know, our courses with the technology department.
Gotcha. And the, I, I only have two, two more questions, colleagues, if you're wondering, when, when is he going to stop? So the, uh, e- every year and, and last year moving forward, although last year was very different, we always begin the year talking about our, our, our improvement plans, what we're going for with each campus. You know, some of this goes into accountability, but take accountability out of it. We have these campus improvement plans. What, what are we doing with those? How, how, how are we able to apply those and keep any kind of consistent standard moving forward into this coming year?
Yeah. So campus improvement plans are still required by law, so that's one thing. Not that we do them for that reason, we like to use them the right way, but we will still be drafting them. I will be bringing to you in the early part of fall, House Bill three literacy and math plans. With our district goals, we'll still develop a district improvement plan. I think you're making a good point, which is our current situation will have to inform that plan. It forces us to prioritize our work, forces, forces us and campuses to prioritize what efforts are the most important things to focus on in terms of improvement while you're in this environment. But student learning can't slow down. And so what you will see in the fall in our, in our, like our literacy, House Bill three plan, you will see our recommendation in terms of goals, what our strategies are. When we offered training to principals in June, we outlined our focus areas and those have not changed. They're still the same, the ones that we were intentionally focusing on prior to, it's just we have to go about our work a little differently. So the short answer to your question is all of those are still in play. We will just work to support principals in their design.
That's great. That's great. It doesn't surprise me in the least. And I, I saw by your, your smile when I was asking the question, I got the answer for that one. So the, the final question that I have at this point is I, I appreciate the guidebook that you're putting together and.
I wish I could claim it, but it's, it's, it's Anita Foster and her team that are, we have a task force that's helping her with content, but they are doing, they're assembling all of it and she's done a fantastic job her and her team. So I just have to give the kudos where the kudos are due.
And from a communication standpoint, that's really been a, a wonderful thing in, in our district during this entire time. So yes, thank you, Ms. Foster for that. And this, this may be for you, this may be for Dr. Wertz. Regarding some of the items in there, when we are preparing for what a classroom and what a campus experience looks like for a student, you know, regarding masks, do, do we have guidance in there for the parents to, you know, start getting their kids used to wearing a mask? You know, increased intervals through the day or just using the mask as the example? Do we have some of those tips and tricks for parents to help them and guide them?
Uh, we have, so our, in the guidebook itself, there'll be all these sections that we kind of went over in this presentation. And the guidebook is designed to do a couple of things. One is to give, really the guidebook is designed to give people a, a broad overview of some of the major questions we know they're going to answer or need answered. And then, as I mentioned earlier, there's a companion website or a landing page that parents will be directed to. And in that webpage, we will add specific things and that's a great suggestion. We can easily add content in there that will, that will, will specifically speak to parents, but here are some things you can do to gear your children up for coming back to school. All that stuff will, we can add and will be in the website. But the details, the really finite details, I think that's the important point for families to know is the details, the small details, those will be on the website. The guidebook is, is supposed to, is intended to give people direction about the big picture and both of those things will be available.
Yeah. I would just add, Dr. Rice said, Aaron Perales is a leader of one of the groups. And not only things like you described, but parent information, parent tips, videos for parents will be produced by his department in collaboration with other staff. So there's a whole effort on what does the parents need to know and how can we start pushing that information out before school starts?
Yeah, yeah. But that's, yeah, that, that's great. I, I, I think one of the, the big things that is important for us is the communication that I, I think many are, are aware and they do it or they know it. But sometimes it's good to have the, the reminder that our children are, are a reflection of us. And they will model what, what they see and what they hear. And it's a, it's a wonderful opportunity to not have anybody offended with a little bit of truth with, with some grace that we, we should make sure that we digest these things on our own as parents and, and take the emotion out of it, whatever we're personally feeling before we start explaining it to our children or talking around our children. Because they will take that, if it's a negative attitude, right into the school, into their online, into their school experience and could comfort their learning process. So as much as I don't want to be in a situation of, of lecturing anybody, I, I think having that truth and grace statement is something to definitely put, whether it's in the book or online.
Right.
Very good. That's all I have for right now. Thank you very much for entertaining all of my questions.
Thank you, Dr. Rice. And you said right now, so you're going to come back later? You're more than welcome to. Any other colleagues with questions? Mr. Hogg, I see your mute button off.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, President Mays and Dr. Rice. Thank you for a lot of the questions. While a lot and long, they were very thorough and I think many of us were asking many of the same things. So we appreciate it and staff and Dr. Rosso's, all, all the, especially the task forces, many of us know most of them. Thank you for all the work. As I think everyone will agree, we all see that there's about a thousand decision points that have to be made throughout this. It, it is not a basic, simple decision, one way or the other with the way it's going. The only thing I think a hundred percent of people agree on is we all wish we were back to. With the way it's going. Um the only thing I think a hundred percent of people agree on is we all wish we were back to school normally. And the only thing I can hundred percent with confidence say is not the case is we're not going to be back to school normally. No matter what, what what happens whichever way um with those decisions, you know. Years ago, we've talked for years, we talked student and staff safety uh in our classrooms. And I think that is always going to be our priority on all these decisions from where we're going. I I appreciate, and let me just start off with some of the communication pieces on there as following up with Dr. Rice from that standpoint. Um you know, the guidebook is a great piece and adding those. Dr. Grasso's, is there plans to have more Q and As, more videos? What what's some of the other plans to help parents feel comfortable with some of these decisions? Whether it's online, which is a big decision for many, and also when when we do have the chance to go back.
Yeah, uh Mr. Hogg, absolutely. So not only written communication, but um also uh videos and question and answer. We do have uh plans for uh Vinnie Tenasia, Dr. Tenasia from the health, Tarrant County Health Department to join us. Like he has before, uh to answer questions, but also at some point, again, not August seventeenth, but at some point. Uh to walk with us in our classrooms and walk with us as we prepare the reopening of schools when we get to that point. And make sure that we have an information session for parents and students. Uh so that we're not only prepared, but we're also communicating upfront that this is what protocols would look like. Um and again, leaning on them to help us uh in partnership like they have been since March, quite frankly, and I I just have to thank them. Uh Dr. Tenasia in particular, uh from the Tarrant County Health Department. Uh because he's been on videos with me and and answering questions and things like that. Uh and his guidance is very much appreciated, but absolutely continue to communicate this uh information uh to parents and 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 the community.
And and let me ask on that communication piece, as the dad of a about to be first grader in a dual language program. Which is a huge obstacle, um just plain and simple. That's one of those really tough ones that comes in. What what's the school doing to help the students and parents communicate with each other um on this? So so the parents that, you know, listen, we we have a big split in all of our schools. We have, you know, single parents, we have two parents that are both working. Uh we have some that have luxury of having some stay home. Are are we doing anything to help those school? The parents communicate with each other and possibly guidance with each other? Or you know, if some families are small group quarantining together to be able assist, or are we doing anything? Are we, do we have any kind of communication portal to assist with that?
So, Dr. Wertz, I see.
No, go ahead.
But no, go ahead.
I was just going to say, um you know, uh when we're, when we think about um. And I, we heard one of our speakers this evening speak about the PTA and leveraging the PTA to facilitate opportunities for people to be connected with one another. Um we can work with principals to help facilitate that, especially at schools like that are specialized in terms of learning. You have a common experience that your kids are are going through. Um it makes it makes for that collaboration to be much more meaningful. So um working with Aaron's department in terms of parents. Um and the individual principals to leverage their PTAs to facilitate that kind of interaction is something we we definitely can plan to do.
Okay, I I I think that's needed. And let me, let me ask, so as we start taking attendance and doing some of those things. You know, with parents who are both working um in that perspective, is late night login considered okay with attendance if they're logging in? And let's let's be honest, sometimes we all know they're not getting it done during the day. Is that is that going to count for attendance or is there a hard timeframe?
Okay, so it's really interesting because you're describing two different things, right? There's ADA, which is our funding source, and then there's credit. For ADA, for asynchronous environments, we have a lot more flexibility. Um where we can actually check that kids are actually engaged in the in the LMS and then take ADA credit. And we have guidance that we will be able to do that. So we don't have, it's not as hard, fast rule in terms of time in the day when someone has to log in. Um like you would normally say, uh in a face-to-face environment, you would say we take, we take attendance second period and second period, you're not there, you're absent. Um in the asynchronous environment, TA has provided a little more flexibility to districts. So that we can verify the student was engaged sometime in the LMS that day and we can take credit for ADA purposes. For for credit for the course, a ninety percent rule, um they have to meet one of those three criteria for progress. And so that can happen pretty much anytime during the day. If a student submits a course, a submit's work for that course sometime before midnight, they get credit for that, for for the attendance that day for ninety percent. If they um if they interact with their teacher through email or through a conversation. Or they log in for some synchronous kind of small group instruction, or um or that that can also count. Or if if the teacher can tell they've been online sometime during the day doing work, they can also get credit for attendance that day. So the the asynchronous environment gives us a lot of flexibility, which is why that that's a really important term. Synchronous learning, um which is live like we're talking about right now, it that is very, very rigid. It's a lot more rigid um in terms, but that's not a scenario that we're having to face. So to answer your question, um yes.
I just wanted to get some context, but the answer is yes.
Context is good, but I love it when it's a yes.
Okay.
You know, and and the one thing I I tell every parent we're talking to, and I think all my colleagues do too. Is we can't compare the spring online learning to what we're going to be facing, the spring and the summer online to what's coming up right now. Um just putting it very bluntly, spring was a crisis um online learning. And I commend staff for putting together a program within two weeks. So I think, and Dr. Wertz and Dr. Brown, y'all did a good job helping us understand um the difference on that. And I know we've talked about it to our faces blue every meeting we've had, um because we know while the spring did its job. It wasn't rigorous and and relevant to really get our students where they needed to go. So with that, one of the questions we asked in the spring and we faced was, what are, you know, I'm making some assumptions. That the health director is going to not allow us back in the schools. And and with that, wh- what's the plan for our staff that do have kids in the schools also and they're teaching? Because we have a lot of teachers that do have kids um currently in the schools. Will teachers be allowed to go into buildings to use all of our technology? What do we plan on them doing with having these rigorous schedules I'm doing? What's our, what's our advisement to the, to so many of our staff members who are also? Um let's let's be honest, majority of our staff members are women, are teachers, and and a lot of them do have children, a lot of guidance. So what's our, what's our guidance on that to to be able to assist?
I'm going to kick it. Go ahead.
Okay, so uh uh Mr. Hogg, so we are uh working with uh our health officials. Uh to also be able to allow our teachers to teach from the classroom uh for online learning. And to teach from the classroom when appropriate, uh and when it's something that they uh feel is necessary, they the teachers. Uh we know that their supplies, their materials, their setup, their equipment is in the classroom. And so if they're going to record a lesson or have a a space to do online learning in the classroom. Um yeah, if we go a hundred percent online, which is very likely, uh then we we will be advocating for them to be allowed to do that. Uh because we want them to be uh best equipped to do their very best online instruction. And we feel that in a classroom, that may be possible. Remember, kind of the goal again is to limit the number of people in our building. Appropriate protocols of social distancing so that we can accomplish this big task of online learning. Um also some flexibility uh with some highly uh specialized uh special education programs. And I'm talking about the highly specialized special education programs, uh working with Dr. Tenasia and others. Uh to allow us to have some limited flexibility if the parents want. For some highly specialized learning uh in terms of special education, uh to be able to do that in a classroom setting. Uh with with that uh exception. And and again, it would be very narrow and very small in terms of the numbers and things like that. Um and and then also make sure that we are able to uh e- e- equip the teacher to do their very best online learning. Uh online instruction, uh so they will be able to come to the classrooms and do that.
And and Dr. Grasso's, knowing that we have, you know, listen, there's lots of families who both spouses are teachers in our district. Um we have a lot that they've both gone into this profession. Um and so with that, on some of this rigorous schedule, are we going to, you know, I always think, you know, you don't have to just think about it from. Eight to four or nine to four, or or some teachers, or is there going to be flex to say you can do a six o'clock lesson or offer this? I know we're offering tutoring late at, later in the day after school. Is there flex on some of those others? You know, I, in most of our worlds, as long as you get the work done, you you gotta have some standard of being there during the day. But there's also some flex and, you know, we open some career tech centers till late at night. So are we going to have some flex on some of those hours?
Yeah, a- absolutely. And and uh the the teacher working on the Canvas uh LMS is an example. To load that information, to load videos and to load the learning, uh that can be done at different times during the day. There will be expectations, however, on certain times to have uh synchronous activities where they, where we offer for kids. Also uh extended PLC time so that the teachers can work with their teams. Uh so if you if you think about it, like a fourth grade team can get together through Zoom. Uh to work on a PLC time where it's really uninterrupted extended time, so they can do their best preparation for the lesson. Uh so working some of those opportunities, but also be flexible uh to load those uh online lessons and and activities that we know are really important.
I I appreciate that. And so then let me add, let me, Dr. Wertz, what are we doing for like our specials classes? Like uh art, PE, orchestra, you know, music, tho- those type of things. What what's that, what's the whole education looking like?
So we're working with Christopher and uh Dr. Anderson and Eric um from athletics to make sure that those things are in place. There will be online environments available for students. Um we, they did a beta test uh earlier in the spring with one school to see about what it would look like to provide even synchronous instruction. With students who are um learning, because so much of the time was being taken up with just um tuning instruments. So uh we we will provide more concrete structure around those once we have a little more information. The reason why we're struggling a little bit around those, um specifically in secondary in terms of announcing, is because we're still waiting on some UIL rules. Um but if, but in in terms of virtual environment, they'll still have access to um their art class, their music class. And their their physical education. Uh we may have to make some adjustments in terms of PE. Because um you, they're going to be assigning kids things to do at home. Uh they're not necessarily going to be, you know, in a synchronous environment with their PE teacher every single day, but they'll have access to all those courses. Uh we'll have more information on on the details of it once we can align those for secondary with UIL, which I, we're expecting any day, to be frank.
Okay, I appreciate that. I also appreciate the discussion over special needs. The more we can help those students and get some flex to bring those in, I I can't fathom, the parents I know.
Correct.
Those situations, it's uh, you know, you think your your challenge is hard, face that challenge. Um and then with this environment, it's it's even harder, you know, Dr. Dr. Grasso's, is there value? You know, we see other districts starting to staff the start date move back. Is there value in that? Or what's the thought on on staff move back? And also, let me just throw in minutes to the week to to add minutes on on any of those.
Yeah, so that's a great question, Mr. Hogg, and we've we've discussed that at length uh with with uh some of our our team members. But at this point, uh weigh in everything. Um and if we go uh completely online, which is very likely August seventeen, it it is uh best to begin. Um to begin schooling. Uh we know that there's a lot of interaction that has already been delayed and missed, obviously, since the spring. Um a lot of the learning that needs to continue and needs to, we need to continue to um really catch up some kids. And fill in some of the gaps and begin working on that very important work. Um the the issue with with delaying anymore, uh or delaying, I should say, beyond uh into August or September. Uh also is is really an unknown as to what we're going to face in the fall. And so it's one of those decisions that uh may have big implications as we get into the fall semester with other things. Uh so as we've kind of looked at this over and over, it it's it's really best in in our opinion right now. Uh to to begin the teaching and learning so that our students can begin to get that interaction. Uh we are going to have, as you've seen, the professional development continue. I will say the other thing with that is that this professional learning and development and things like that will continue. That's why we'll have PLC time built into the schedule, because it's not something that, okay, if we have another week, we'll put more uh training out there. And and that that'll turn another, you know, key or whatever. It it's something that you you acquire over time. Uh the other thing, quite frankly, is that when we look at, and Dr. Rice mentioned this with social emotional learning. Um the sooner we can assess the needs in those areas so that we can adapt. Today, we're we're talking about counseling services and having office hours for counselors and things like that. But quite frankly, until those issues begin to emerge and we see the true effect, we're going to have to make, I think, more investment in social emotional learning. And from my standpoint and and our team, it's the sooner we begin that work, the sooner we can address those needs uh for a longer term. Uh so that being said, um we we don't at this point see a need to uh to push beyond August seventeen. Uh the beginning of our online learning.
I I appreciate that. And and let me, I heard Ms. Minnery talk about it when we do ever do go back. We will train all of our teachers on how to put on PPE, how to properly use PPE. Um that's correct, right? Dr. Grasso's?
Yes, that is correct. I was going to ask Ms. Minnery if she wants to address that, but absolutely. And that's part of our reopening plan with the, with our local health authorities. They have already looked at this plan of protocols and things like that with Ms. Minnery and Dr. Simmons in particular. Uh and has advised us really well and and that'll continue, yes.
A- and let me a- let me ask the last question, and you know, is people um. Listen, there there's a study a million different ways. You can find one on this side, one on that side, and differing opinions across the board on this. Um assuming we're online by the health director, assuming we start looking, wha- what are the parameters? That get us back to in person, that, you know, as the health director advised that of what's happening. And and where it gets to that stage where there is a comfort level um from from that perspective. Because you hear about it used to be flattening the curve, now it's like get a decline, and then some people are like, no, it's a vaccine. And and I, listen, I I get, I hear all the different, I think everyone has sent all of us every article that's out there. And every epidemiologist who's written about it, and there's two different sides on either way. And and listen, and today in a world of what what to vet through, what's really valid. I'm like, is this hospital epidemiologist better than this ones and what they're making determinations on those? You know, what is the health director advising us on? What is that parameter that? It's a guidance that gets us back to that level where he's going to say, I'm feeling comfortable. You know, after this first six weeks, saying, yes, here's the judgment factors that we have to look at.
Yeah, and uh Mr. Hogg, that's a great question. And that's, that's something that we're also uh asking. That there be some clarity around that for the community and for everyone else. But generally, um kind of starting at the at the big picture level, generally, it's the condition of our county. The the capacity for testing, contact tracing and hospitalizations will be kind of that first umbrella. And that's really why this is even being considered right now, because we're at that point. Positivity rate is another one. So they do have very structured indicators. Uh like positivity rate, like hospitalization and capacity. Um because we will, uh if we're not careful, contribute to that uh load. As 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 many school districts in Tarrant County, uh you know, inevitably, if you open, will continue to to add to that load. In a way that becomes overwhelming, um overwhelming to the county and health, health providers that we have. So those are some of the indicators, but with that will come um other markers, and we've asked for that. And quite frankly, and and again, this is, this is not a a huge critique of TEA, even though it may be some critique. Uh there isn't a marker with the weeks on TEA. There isn't a marker when the board has four more weeks, that they can extend and through resolution and things like that. There aren't markers of health guidance in that guy, in that order or in that guidance from TEA. And that's it, that's what has been continually a challenge with their guidance, even as they change it to Friday. Quite frankly, we've been advocating for hybrid, and and I'll, this will be my last point unless you ask me more questions about this. But uh we've been advocating for hybrid for high schools since May. And saying, let us control the volume of our buildings. Uh and then it comes on Friday when most districts have already abandoned any thought of hybrid, because uh because it was not going to be allowed. So anyway, back to your original questions, we will have certain markers, we're we're asking that from our health authorities. that will really guide our reopening decision.
And, and listen, we know T E A is changing constantly daily and, and I don't like to defend them. The pandemic's changing daily. You know, I, I, I think they make it even more confusing. You know, we see half our colleagues in other districts have announced and something's changed. And we intentionally waited to hopefully have something that doesn't have to change. But as soon as I say that, it'll change tomorrow or the next day. So I'm hesitant to say that. And I just, you know, I'll let my colleagues ask the other questions and anything else that we have. I think, you know, with two long question guys like Raich and I, we probably asked most of them. So I appreciate the staff for the time and the work and, and all the decision points. And you know, listen, all of us up here have made hard decisions. All of us have up here made decisions that doesn't make everyone happy. And we know it's not gonna make everyone happy. And we know there's a side on either side that wants all of us. And, and I just commend our staff for taking into account our student and our staff and our community safety on this from, from what you believe and what we believe is the best decision for all. So I, I thank you all for your time and hand it back to Ms. President.
Thank you, Mr. Hogg. Any other colleagues with questions? Okay, Mr. Will Banks?
Thank, thank you, President Mace, and thank you to my other colleagues. Unfortunately, you guys did a good job of asking a lot of my same questions, but unfortunately not quite all of them. I do wanna stop and thank the parents and the staff that spoke earlier tonight. This is not an easy time for easy decisions. I'll echo something I've heard from a couple of our colleagues in Fort Worth is pandemics don't care what's fair. And they certainly don't make anything easy. And it is a moving target. And kudos, I echo what Mr. Hogg says, kudos for us to kind of pause and wait to see what forms. Doc, Dr. Vassos, you're absolutely right. If we, we need to, our decision needs to be based on science and what maximizes learning for everyone. I think all of our, all of the colleagues on the board, including you, agree the best place for our students is in the classroom. But it's gotta be safe. And I know that there are some parents that spoke tonight that didn't want to hear that. But we've got to do what's right to make it safe so that we can get those kids back in the classroom. So, and I don't know how many people were involved in all of these committees. Anyone wanna venture a guess? Just a lot. We'll just say a lot.
Yeah, a lot.
That, there was a lot, you, we can tell, there was a lot of hard work that went into this. And thank you for that. I think the, I think both Dr. Raish and, and Mr. Hogg mentioned that this was a brilliant plan to go with this, with the model that we're going with. Because our, frankly, our teachers were, one, one of the biggest fears was how much time is it gonna take for me to teach both? And I think you've gone a long way to allay those fears in terms of what their day to day, you know, how they provide instruction, but also on the safety side. So again, thank you to Dr. Brown, Dr. Wertz, Ms. Minterly and Erin Paralis and all the other committee leaders. Thank you for really working through the details. I'll try to keep my comments brief since the other two were long. And I know it's hard for me, so bear with me. I'm gonna try. So Dr. Wertz, since you were talking, I, I do wanna say one thing that really struck me. And I'm gonna quote a word I learned from the great Debbie Peach at Lamar High School, vis a vis my daughter. And then I'm very sanguine about the future and the fact that, you know, yes, this is tough and it's a burden on all of us. You know, sanguine is obviously the right word because it means optimism in especially tough times, right? Like this. I, I'm, you know, coming from the technology world, I've been the person for the last 15 years thinking, when are we ever going to leverage technology to truly transform education? So that all students have an equal chance when we increase student outcomes for all. And I think necessity is, is the mother of invention. And I think there's no better time for that to be true than right now in this pandemic. And that we're being forced to really leverage our assets to increase student outcomes in a very difficult time. And in very difficult environment for that to happen. And we're seeing a million different experiments going on across districts and school rooms worldwide. And we're, I think, really starting to see what things are bubbling to the surface that really will provide that transfer, true transformation in learning and opportunity for students to come. And for those parents that are worried about what the kids are missing out and that, you know, worried about what happened last semester, maybe it's not a zero sum game in terms of what they lost. But I think I'm also saying one that our students are learning and adapting and growing in ways that we can't yet measure. And that is, you know, this generation is gonna be a whole lot more resilient. They're going to be able to face adversity better than any other generation. I'm very hopeful about that. And I'm hopeful that it is, is there, you know, the pluses outweigh the minuses here. Yes, there are gaps in learning that are developing, but hopefully this generation is going to be changed for the better because of this adversity they're facing, things that we're all facing right now. But back to the questions. Back to the technology, Dr. Wertz, you were, you were, you mentioned, I saw on the slide that, you know, this model is going to be based on a blended learning model. Is that correct?
Well, I was trying to find a word that would make sense to the majority of people. When I say blended, I was trying to articulate the idea that you were describing earlier, which is teachers will be planning primarily for their online instruction and then leveraging that to provide extensions that learning face to face in the classroom. But we're not asking teachers to have completely separate activities, completely separate experiences in the classroom, separate from those that are online for the purpose that Dr. Cavassos articulated, which is that any, any moment you could be, have to go home and we want yours, your instruction to be seamless. So I called it blended simply because it, it's the best term that I can get to that would help people see that it's blended. You're gonna have face to face experience with your teachers, but you're also gonna be engaged in learning online still, even if you're face to face in the classroom.
Okay, good. Well, thanks for that clarification because I know there are some teachers that are, have been doing blended and that has been proven on, maybe not for everybody, but it, there has been proven outcomes in terms of those classrooms that have adopted that kind of model. As long as they, they adopt those best practices there. And even though maybe it's not the right term, one of the great things I do about the most successful blended models is that it gives the students control over what, what was the TP three, time, path, place and in the pace of their learning. So will students, even though this isn't a blended model, will they have that kind of autonomy and agency over their learning and kind of those type of domains?
Yeah. So we're trying to foster, that's the whole luxury of being in an asynchronous environment versus synchronous. Because if it was sync, if it was completely synchronous, you literally log in and just watch your teacher teach you, which is not that productive. So you, you wanna have a situation where you can kind of do both of those scenarios, but primarily live in the asynchronous environment for the reasons you're describing, which is kids can accelerate their learning quicker or slow it down based upon what their needs are. And the teacher can also customize what activities kids engage in based upon what those needs are. There is a little bit of, there is gonna be a little bit more structure than I would say totally in an asynchronous environment where in the, in the spring, which I think was discouraging for some people, you would get your assignments from some teachers and then you could work them at your own pace. We're gonna have more structure this time where, where, where students actually have a stronger sense about what they're expected to do and when their deadlines are. So if I'm in high school and I'm, I'm just making up something right now and I'm required to write a composition, I still may have a few days to do it and I may be able to go faster than my other students, uh, someone else. But I also may have some assignments. My teacher literally says, you're gonna do this on Monday and it's due Tuesday morning. So there's gonna be a little bit of both of those happening, but the luxury of asynchronous is to do exactly what you're describing, accommodate the pace and the learning preferences of students in ways that you can't really do in a synchronous environment. Because honestly, synchronous environment almost is similar to whole group instruction. Everyone is listening to their teacher talk. And that's not really, that, that, there, there are scenarios where that works, but there's a lot of variance in terms of the way kids learn that can't be accommodated in the synchronous only environment.
Yeah. No, that was evident this past spring with, I had to use my one data point, my 16 year old is the example. But he is one where he wasn't very fond of the synchronous and but on the other hand, the summer and in the spring, he'd love to be able to do it on his own time when he wanted to, usually one thirty at nine.
I think the key to it is making sure that the quality is there regardless. That's the important thing that we still want it to be rigorous. We still want there to be strong learning standards. We want there to be quality products. And the good thing is, is the older kids get, the more proficient they get in their own facilitation of that process. So yeah, that's the part we can't compromise on is they still have to meet the same learning objectives. But how you get there, that's the, that's the art of teaching.
Right, right. We're still preserving that. So I won't dwell on the blended model since it's really not accurate. But will, but given the fact that both the online and the in-person instruction would be there, would the in-person maybe be a little more differentiated where they could do more of the kind of the rotations that you do in some of the blended models when you do the in-class portion?
Right. So we are gonna be, I, I can only answer that to the point of where safety kind of comes in the way, right? Because like, for example, in elementary school, I'll just use as an example, rotations are very, very common because we group kids in collaborative groups. We're gonna have to have protocol on how that happens and what's allowed and not allowed by social distancing and all that, assuming we can go back to school. But even in the online environment, that can still be facilitated. You can still create group projects on Canvas, for example, where kids collaborate with each other and work on a project together. And you can still, as a teacher, track who's contributing and how often they're contributing. You can still have live events where you break kids out into breakout groups and have them communicating with each other and problem solving with each other. So all those things that you normally see in a, in a face to face environment, you can do online. So we still want those things to happen, even especially in the face to face environment. It just got to be structured a little different because you can't, we may have social distancing requirements in face to face that we can't necessarily overcome right away. But it doesn't mean that collaborative group work and those kinds of discussions cannot still be facilitated in a virtual environment, even while they're in class if necessary.
Well, I think it's awesome because I think, you know, I envisioned doing those kind of virtual rotations like you just described. And then having the teacher facilitate, reporting that in person and, and also being able to direct kids that need the enrichment that had accelerated and, or those that need intervention, you know, intervention time to, to relearn or reteach. Again, I think it's like my colleagues expressed, I think this is a brilliant model. I think it's one that will, will work and I assume we'll adapt it over time. Another thing I like about it is that you built in to meet the needs of all students, be those that need the intervention or for our SPED students or for even our G T students. And so kudos to you guys on that. Another thing you mentioned was that my colleague, Mr. Hogg, was asking about attendance. And attendance is very critical for funding. And the thing that I wanna stress to parents, if there's any parents still listening at home, is according to the T E A, right, that attendance has to be daily. So whatever model, that has to be done daily. So my son, unfortunately, my son's not gonna like this because he would, he would get in and logging in on Monday, Tuesday, do all his work and be done for the week.
Yeah, and that's not gonna work.
We didn't do that. Students need to know upfront, they can't do that. And parents, you know, they, you know, they're trying to juggle working with multiple kids. I know some parents would mainly focus on kid A, on, on this day, get them on task. And then that kid could go play while the next day they worked on their other, with their other kid and that's not gonna work either. So we need to be very upfront with the, the way grading is. Kids have to check in and be counted, no matter which, whichever method daily. And then the 90%, I'm glad you covered that too for getting credit because if they don't, if kids don't check in daily and they're at risk of not getting the 90%, then that kid's in trouble, we're in trouble. So.
And I think that's a really important point that thinks were worth punctuating is we do have learners, students who will pass the course, complete all the coursework and still have to go into credit recovery simply to earn seat time. That's very avoidable if a student will log in and do their work every day. If we can count progress every day, that whole process can be completely avoided. And it doesn't necessarily equate to the same thing as seat time in school, right? Where you, or you're there for the, the whole period. If you, if you, if showing progress, that's how we check in. Because the minutes have been modified by T E A. So I just think that's a really important point to mark out or to, to stand out for, for families who are watching. If they're watching is, it's daily and it's every period. And that's gonna be really important for them to avoid having to do credit recovery. Even if they do all the work, you could pass with an A and still have credit recovery situation if you haven't done the seat time. So I think we're, we're blessed in this asynchronous environment in that I think T E A has provided a pretty broad stroke on how we can count progress. They've made it pretty doable, to be honest. So it's just a matter of doing what you describe, which is do something every day.
Yeah. You mentioned the technology and, and that, you know, we had a real issue and a real scramble. And one of the equity issues, the biggest equity issue in my mind that came up was the fact that for students who don't have an interconnect connection and we have devices on order. I know up until Friday, and I just wanna get clarification on that. So the T E A was demanding that for anyone that still didn't have internet access or a device at home, that we open the buildings and allow them to come in. Now assume since we're, it's looking like, I don't know, if the county closes us down for a period of time, we assume that that requirement's lifted now, right?
Yeah, I'm gonna defer to Dr. Cavassos.
David, Mr. Will Banks, so there are several, that's one of them, requirements from T E A that, that health authority can address by, by their action. I think based on special education and specific cases like that, there may be some narrow opportunity to address some of those things. However, in the big scheme.
We lost you, Dr. C. So you've frozen for everybody else.
All right. We're gonna make sure that, that we have those devices available for students. That's our aim. So that if we have to provide some type of in-building instruction, will be very limited. Very limited to special education, the things we mentioned.
I mean, I, my first choice is to get those hotspots in those hands of those kids who need it and make sure the devices are in the hands of everyone that needs it. But if failing that, it's good that we're willing to, on a very limited scope, allow them in for, for that as well. Speaking of the technology, I mean, one of the things that, you know, it's bring your device and for a lot of those, just B Y O D. But for a lot of the students that were checked out devices, we're assuming that's the device that's going back and forth. Were adequate protection cases and carrying satchels given out with those devices when we handed those out in the spring? And if not, I mean, even when we did, I know my student has a one-to-one device being in the STEM Academy, that there's a lot more wear and tear and replacement needed on devices as they're going. Um, and replacement needed on devices as they're going back and forth as opposed to staying in the classroom. So are we factoring in, in terms of our replacement schedules, the fact that we're, we're gonna be accelerating? The number of devices that, that will need to be repaired and or replaced?
Yeah, so um, and I, I can defer to Eric. I will say that there's a rebalancing plan that his team is actually developing. To make sure that we're replenishing schools at seventy-five percent capacity. And then there's also opportunities for us to um, work. What, what he's calling a district-centric model that allows us to manage the life cycle of the actual devices. So that students who have devices in their hands that are aged or not performing, um, can have those transferred out. As well as acknowledge or let us know through an online student portal, uh, that their device or the applications on their device aren't functioning well. So that structure is being put in place by the technology department, um, which should allow students to make sure they have the right device in their hands that's functional. Uh, and they're able to access all the applications on the device to do their work.
All right, well then, um, good, thank you, Dr. Works. Um, I, I've got just a few questions related to, on the safety side. Mr. Hog asked about the staggered start times, so that is something we're considering. Um, we've covered the de- desk dividers and at this time, we don't see that as a viable option. But let's talk about the buildings themselves. Um, did we set um, a standard in terms of? Distancing within the classroom and then, and I know we, we need to stress to everyone. Our ability to meet these safety standards are dependent on the number of people in that building. And if it reaches a certain threshold, all those safety protoc- protocols collapse. Um, but let's assume that we can maintain um, social distancing protocols. Some districts, you know, use the six-foot apart measure. Other districts, because every classroom is different and different sizes. They limit the size to classroom based on a forty-five square foot model. We looked at one of those two models to determine what the optimal capacity for social distancing is within each classroom. Knowing that they vary in size. And I don't know, Mr. Horn might want to answer.
Actually more uh, Ms. Minarly, I think, uh, in terms of uh, spacing out students, Annette, if you're still on.
Um, yes, um, we had looked at, we had looked at trying to stay at six feet, particularly with our older students. Um, American Academy of Pediatrics suggests that with your younger students, three feet might be acceptable. So since the elementary classrooms are typically smaller, in, in those environments, we might look at more like a three to four foot distancing.
Okay, yeah, no, that's good because that's the one thing I'm worried about is splitting up a classroom at the elementary level. And then now, now you've got a, a human resource issue and then you've got one classroom split between two physical classrooms. And how can one teacher cover that? So that's been an area of angst, I know, for a lot of elementary school teachers. What about other um, elements with the building and how we conduct class? Did we, have we looked at encouraging, I know it's Texas and it's hot, but. Have, are we encouraging classrooms to meet outside? And any of those other um, guidelines and best practices that have been disseminated? And um, ventilation in the classroom. I know a lot of our classrooms, we can't open windows. But how are we addressing those guidelines?
So it, it's gonna sound like a broken record, but uh, it's, it's very much dependent on the number of students and. Individuals in the building. So if you can adequately social distance and you can adequately uh, manage. Uh, wearing masks and face coverings and controlling exits and entries and all this sort of thing that we talked about. Uh, you're much better, in a better position to just enhance those things. So back to your point, Mr. Will Banks, to offer class to go outside, to have extended periods of time. Uh, to be outdoors and things like that, when appropriate, become much more manageable. When we have an ability to manage how many people are in the building, quite frankly. And that's something that we're going to uh, work with our health authorities to, uh, when we talk about uh, re-entry. Or opening of our buildings at some point, um, we, we are going to uh, look at those best practices. So that we can implement those things. Um, if the numbers are such that, that even an outside type of learning environment becomes. Uh, something that, you know, is not realistic, that's when our, our enhancements begin to uh, compromise, uh, for example. Um, and then I think um, if Ms. Powell or, or actually Kelly, if you're on. Um, to talk about our uh, air quality and things like that and fresh air into intake. Maybe you wanna describe that a little bit?
Sorry, Kelly, I know it's late.
That's okay, thank you. I've had my cup of tea this evening, so. So uh, no, we, we, you're correct. Most of our uh, classrooms now have non-operable windows. Uh, that's just become the standard in new school building and in retrofitting of old school buildings. Uh, but uh, with that has come a change in the required amount of outside air that we bring in on a, on a regular basis. So throughout the day, we cycle the air with that fresh outside air more routinely. And so uh, the requirement varies uh, depending upon the type of unit, but uh, but and it's not one hundred percent. Otherwise, we couldn't adequately cool that air, keep that air cool. But uh, but we do cycle the air fresh. To have fresh air brought in regularly. And then too, most of our newer units through the two thousand fourteen bond program. Most of our newer units now have ionization uh, equipment inside the unit, which is uh, which is used to kill. Uh, bacteria, germs and viruses and that sort of thing as well. So um, we, we have that also as an opportunity. And then too, uh, just the routine changing of filters. Uh, we, we have a very aggressive preventive maintenance program by where we change filters on average, three to four times a year, much like you would your home. Uh, we'll go to, uh, willing, we'll improve that, advance that changing of filters uh, more regularly. Even still, uh, through this process to try to make sure that we're keeping uh, fresh, clean filters in the air conditioning units as well. So we'll, we'll just ramp up our P M process a little bit more. Uh, we'll continue to bring in fresh air from the outside. And uh, and then we'll make sure to bolster that with uh, with a more aggressive sanitization process inside the classroom.
So on the, on the filter question, so I assume when you replace those filters, you're looking at MERV thirteen or fifteen. Or higher filters, or are you already using MERV thirteen or fifteen?
No, we, we use a MERV seven at this point, but uh, the, and the, and the, a lot of the reason for doing that is we change them more frequently. And so we, we may uh, try to advance that MERV rating a bit, try to filter out more of the viruses. Uh, try to get to a smaller micron level.
Yeah, we've given, given the amount of research on the aerosolization of the virus and how it's spreading through a. You know, they really strongly sus- suspect that it's being passed through the H V H, uh, eight, the. Air systems and um, supposedly the, it's my understanding of, of MERV thirteen or MERV fifteen is sufficient enough to filter out the virus.
You are correct.
And so I would hopefully encourage us as a district to upgrade the MERV rating on all of our filters. That's a, a fairly cheap, right, upgrade?
Yeah, it really is. It's just a matter of getting uh, getting those filters in to do that. Right now, we, we don't have that. Because we've not used that in the past, we'll have to, we'll have to change to that MERV rating. But uh, that's not a, that's not a hard thing.
I would love to see that. I think that would be, I am not on the committee, but I, I would assume that would have been one of the easy recommendations. That the committee would have made.
Yes, sir.
Um, um, and then finally, um, I, my final question related to that, I shared with you guys. Um, the um, the uh, uh, Public Health. Uh, College at Harvard has a, has had an ongoing project. Um, I don't know how, how many years, but it was, it's the healthy building project. And so they've kind of um, put out a new set of guidelines and have really uh, been advocating for a lot of their best practices. Um, in how they can be adapted for school buildings um, to tackle COVID in, in very practical ways. Like using the MERV thirteen or fifteen filters. Uh, but then a lot of the recommendations, like having classrooms meet outside when, when at all possible. Most of them don't cost much money. Some are um, would be a budgetary. Yeah, and I would argue some are things that we want to be shifting to anyway. And so maybe just ma- it, it might make sense for the finance committee to uh, ask Kelly's committee on the buildings. And um, what would be their priority uh, that we might want to look at? Yeah, that might have a more significant financial impact. Things like the one I would recommend, you know, suggest to look at is. Um, retrofitting all of our bathrooms to be touchless, so that they would have the touchless sinks, the touchless urinals and. And commodes. Um, that was one of the big recommendations from that uh, project group from Harvard. And um, I don't know what the percentage of our bathrooms are that are touchless. I know a lot of the newer buildings are. But I, I would assume most of the older buildings are not. So um, that's something. That maybe we could look and study to see what the cost would be and then look and see if we need to repurpose bond money. Because that, to me, makes sense for reducing the spread of not just COVID nineteen, but anything else like the flu. Or even um, other uh, infections. So I don't know what your thoughts are on that.
Currently, our, our building, many of our buildings are still uh, with metered faucets and, and not touchless. Uh, there are very few uh, of our newer buildings that, that employ that technology. Uh, the difference being that the, using a meter faucet um, helps us with a number of things. We've always used metered faucets mainly to, to conserve water and then prevent vandalism or flooding in restrooms and things like that. That's just the normal, uh, the normal way that we handle that. But typically, uh, using a, a metered faucet or, or one that even that you have to touch. Uh, the, you're generally using soap and water to aggressively wash your hands. And so we're not as concerned about the, the touch point there. Uh, we can, we can address that with sanitizing and disinfecting. Uh, if students are using soap to wash their hands, uh, and then rinse their hands in the metered faucet. They don't have to touch the metered faucet for it to turn off. And then they can dry their hands with paper towels. And so they should, by the very nature of washing their hands with soap and water. Uh, avoid uh, that, that spreading of any virus that might be on the surface.
Okay, that was the, thanks, Mr. Horn, um, uh, for the feedback. And uh, again, thanks everyone for all the hard work they've put into this. Um, these aren't fun times. But um, I think we've got, given the challenges that we're facing, that we've got a great plan. You guys have all worked tirelessly on. So again, thank you for all the hard work.
Thank you, Mr. Will Banks. Ms. Walton?
Thank you, President May. I'd like to follow up on um, with uh, Mr. Horn about the. I can understand why we have them. Uh, they are not touchless. Um, you have to really push on the button and keep it pushed to get water for a long enough time to rinse your, the soap off your hands. Uh, I think they're metered for about maybe five seconds. And handwashing protocols now are for twenty seconds. So is there some way to adjust those faucets? To meet the new requirements?
And I, we can, we can adjust the metering. I don't know the exact length of time that we can set those for. They are, that, but they can be adjusted. Again, the, the action of using soap, uh, that's really what we're after here. And so um, if they, if the students are properly washing their hands with uh, the soap that's provided. Then in the process of rinsing it, if they've had to touch the metered faucet with soap, then in some senses, they're disinfecting the metered faucet at the same time. So um, we, we can certainly look at that. Uh, the cost to retrofit faucets. Uh, would be quite significant across our district with uh, seventy-four facilities. And the very, the vast number of faucets that we have in place. Not that we can't do it. But if they're washing their hands properly, it shouldn't be an issue. Uh, they should be able to, to wash their hands, rinse their hands properly. And then again, by the very nature of doing that, they should be clean and they shouldn't have to touch the faucet again.
Well, um, and for small, for very small children with very small hands. Those metered faucets are very difficult to operate. Um, you know, I've, when I'm just teaching or. Supervising children, I would have to go in there and do it for some of the younger students in our elementary schools. Is there any way to adjust that so that um, it, it's not a, a hindrance?
Yes, ma'am, we'll do so.
Okay. And then the other question I have is about discipline, so I don't think that's for you, Mr. Horn. Thank you for your answers and for all your time and, and effort on this. I appreciate it so much. So um, my question is on discipline. Um, I haven't heard much about that. As far as discipline for um, students who might um. Uh, make some choices about some of the protocols that we're putting in place. Uh, what uh, what are we thinking for, for that?
So we have a committee, um, that's part of the task force that's working on protocols. And um, some recommendations for um, what campuses and teachers should do to help facilitate um, online behavior. That's appropriate and what that relationship is to our student code of conduct. Um, so that, that, that guidance is being developed right now by our task force that we will publish. So that students know exactly what behaviors are gonna be contrary to um, what we would consider appropriate behavior online. And um, what the consequences of those behaviors would be. Um, but there's a task force that's, that's working on that as, as we speak, actually.
Well, I'm glad, I'm glad to know that, Dr. Works. Thank you. I'm also talking about when we finally get back to open, you know, to open campuses. And um, the discipline involved there uh, for kiddos who do not want to social distance or do not want to wear a mask. Oh, have, are they work, is the committee working on that also?
I mean, uh, really, anything that's related to um, online learning and all, also learning in the classroom. In this kind of environment will be, uh, it will be looked at by the, by the committee.
Yeah, and Ms. Walton, I'll, I'll add that, and again, apologies ahead of time for sounding like a broken record. But as we can manage the numbers, then we can manage the discipline, especially with social distancing and things like that. It's when T E A says, everybody who wants to come can come, uh, that it becomes very challenging to manage some of these. Uh, not only behaviors, but I, I would say that, that uh, even if they're not doing it. Uh, because they want to violate social distancing, it's just part of being a child.
Being a kid.
Yeah, and, and so, uh, but as we have the numbers managed, uh, which is certainly something we will advocate for. Then, then it becomes much more uh, realistic to, to do that uh, with, with, with uh, training and habit forming and things like that.
And, and just, you know, what was said earlier about um, parents uh, modeling uh, the proper etiquette. Uh, that we're now using uh, is going to be very important uh, and to help their kids and to help our staff. To uh, you know, get, get through this. That was my last question. Thank you.
Absolutely, and I, I will, uh, President May just uh, ask uh, Annette Minarly. Because of, of course, there has been a committee looking at hand washing as well. So uh, she has some things I think she wants to add from, from the, the health uh, coordination and things like that. So, uh, Ms. Minarly.
Um, yes, um, you, you had expressed a concern about, about the twenty seconds and how long the water runs. When they're washing their hands for that twenty seconds, the water doesn't have to be running that whole time. That's, that's not a, your hands are in the running water. So they can get their hands wet and get their soap. And then the twenty seconds is really the friction. Where you rub all surfaces of the hands and then you rinse them off. So the. So the, the, the way the faucets are is is not really a huge concern because once they've rinsed one palm, then they can curl and use the the outside of their fingers and press it down that way. And that way, the the palm or surface that's really what's going to touch food and their face and that kind of thing won't have touched the faucet again.
Thank you, Annette.
Thank you, Ms. Minarly.
You're welcome.
Okay, any other questions by my colleagues? Mr. Chapa?
Uh, thank you, President Mays. Uh, been a lot of great questions tonight. And as everyone said before me, uh, most of them have already been asked and I'm, I'm making my way through my list here. And I think I'm just going to hit some um ones that stand out that I I think I've heard uh quite a bit more from maybe parents and just some other um things that I'm interested in that I I think give some insight into how complicated this issue has been and all of the work that's gone into it. I want to start with a a question that I saw on a slide, from a slide I saw uh early on. And Dr. Kavasas, you mentioned this a little bit earlier, the hybrid model. And I guess, and I've since learned that that is something that popped back up on Friday. Is there anything else we know about what that looks like um right now?
Great question, uh, Mr. Chapa. And and so because there's a lot of different uh communication from T E A and all that, I'll, I'll just uh kind of calibrate what hybrid uh means. So from the agency up until Friday, hybrid meant a schedule that you, the district, can develop for cohorts of students, but it would have to be their choice to go hybrid. So I'll say it again. We could have developed an A and B or three days a week and all that. But if the students didn't want to do that and nobody availed themselves of that schedule, we could not implement it. What happened Friday was you can district for high school students develop a hybrid schedule that the district requires, not offers, but requires. That's a significant difference. And we have been uh advocating and asking for that type of uh flexibility since May because we know that our high schools in particular uh serve thousands of students in some cases. And we want to reduce the occupancy so we can implement the social, the social distancing and the protocols. So that was the big difference that was announced on Friday. Uh, that you can now manage a hybrid schedule as a district and say, for example, freshmen will come Monday and Tuesday and sophomores will come, you know, Wednesday and Thursday, et cetera. So it's really co-horted. It's another way of saying it. You can cohort students uh on different days. And the district can require that and implement that as a schedule. The, the key, though, is that it's limited to high school under T E A guidelines. What we are um working with our health authorities and will work with our health authorities that when we reopen, or we open, I should say, um, that we may have a need based on the situation at the time to implement that type of schedule in junior high and maybe even in elementary. It's not allowed today through T E A rules for junior high or for elementary. Um, so that's the hybrid consideration. And Dr. Brown's uh committee in particular um had been working on what would a hybrid schedule look like? Um, i- if if we were allowed to do it, basically. Uh, and and we wanted to explore that because we were leaving, trying to leave no stone unturned. Um, and so one model was, was to look at alpha by alpha. So you could attend school by certain alpha grouping and uh and try to address the siblings in the system. Again, if we were allowed to do it. As of Friday, we're allowed to do it for high school. Uh, so, so uh not really practical uh in terms of what we were discussing. Quite frankly, back in June, many of the big districts, because we we were on calls, uh, were trying to advocate and trying to develop hybrid schedules, and they just simply abandoned them because it wasn't allowed and it would not be allowed. Uh, so that's kind of the challenge with this type of of planning. Um, but to to your question, that's, that's what a hybrid could possibly look like is cohort by alpha, possibly through a a system so that uh siblings, you know, you don't have your elementary coming Monday and Tuesday, and then the family and in in high school, you know, the, the high school student comes on Thursday, and here you are again, having different schedules. So uh that, that's, it was preliminary kind of planning uh uh on that. But but again, understanding that we weren't allowed to do that.
Uh, thank you. And so that it sounds like that's something that we're considering doing when we can open back up, but we're not up until, you know, I guess a few days ago, it's not something we're actively planning to implement for sure.
That's correct. And so what we would do is that as we get further clarity from the county and and et cetera, uh, we will probably re- re-engage that type of committee and thinking uh to begin that planning process as we were doing back in early June, uh even though we were told we couldn't do it. Um, to try to see if that would make sense because, again, the county, to a large extent, can uh put parameters as to how you reopen your school. The biggest parameter is the occupancy of your building. Um, and and so with that, if there's an occupancy limit, then we would work a schedule and develop a schedule that would meet that occupancy limit uh that best serves our families and our students.
Okay. Um, I move into a different subject, and I'm going to be hopping with my questions don't kind of line up very neatly with with the order that anything was presented. But um, there was a slide and a little bit of a discussion about requirements for parent volunteers in the coming school year. And so when we do resume in-person instruction in some form, whatever it is, can somebody give me a little bit more insight in what the role of parent volunteers is going to look like this year?
So that's a, that's a great question. And and we've actually um surfaced some of that with Ms. Minarly, uh, which is why she's, she's very critical in all these discussions because uh the question we posed to to Annette was can some of this uh protocol implementation, specifically uh temperature checks? Because that's a high volume in terms of of doing that. Um, can some of that work be done by volunteers? We know there are people uh throughout the community, and we're very fortunate of about this, that want to volunteer and they want to volunteer in person. So the question is, are there roles in uh protocol implementation and things like that where volunteers could could help uh in in a very significant way? And Annette, I'll let you um give the answer. I think the answer was yes, unless it, unless it has changed. We haven't talked about it recently. But go ahead, Annette.
Um, it, they, they could help in a, in a limited fashion. Uh, particularly a temperature taking would would be an example. But as far as as being like really interior into the building, probably not. A- and the reason will be the contact tracing and and a a way to think of it is, is the building will almost be in a perimeter lockdown all the time because that allows us to have good control and and know who the contacts are in the event that we have a case. And and that's just going to be incredibly important to be sure we don't become a super-spreading environment.
And and I think the other thing Annette said was consistency and training would be paramount to any volunteer. So in other words, not just I can show up every now and then and things like that. We, if there's a volunteer who wants to do this in a persistent kind of uh way, then then we would certainly welcome that. But and 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 training those individuals.
Okay, thank you for that. Um, the next question I have is, is, was covered by Dr. Wurtz some. Um, but uh there was a distinction on one of the slides in the number, between the number of minutes that were going to be required for instruction for the different levels. And if I'm remembering right, it was, I think it was pre-K through most grades was a hundred and eighty minutes. And then I think high school was two hundred and forty. And I guess the question I have, um, I'm tr- having trouble visualizing what a minute requirement looks like in an asynchronous environment when we also had the discussion about how student progress is going to be measured in terms of you know, assignments completed. So um can get a little more insight into how that instructional minutes requirement is going to work?
It's really more guidance in terms of how you have to design your instruction so that that student can engage in learning with at least that number of minutes. So whether it's the combination of the activities and tasks the students are being asked to engage in or the moments where they're either linking up synchronously with their teacher or um or they're asked to like, I'm making up stuff like watch a video and answer questions. The, the, the sum of all that engagement of time should add up to at least a hundred and eighty minutes. So basically, in essence, we're saying when teachers design instruction, they have to design instructions so that a student can actually engage in learning and have about a hundred and eighty minutes worth of learning to engage in on a daily basis at a minimum. Um, these are T E A timeframes, and you'll notice that they don't match up to what you normally would get in a school day. We have four hundred and twenty or four hundred and thirty-five instructional minutes at the elementary level typically in a school day, which includes all of your core content as well as all of your specials time. Um, T E A has articulated this idea that if you're in an asynchronous or in an online environment, the idea of sitting in front of a computer for six hours during a school day is is impractical. And so they've created minimum requirements that each school district must submit. We have to submit a, a, a plan to them about how we're going to be um rolling out our asynchronous learning. And one of their criteria that they look for to approve that plan um is these minutes, so this hundred and eighty minutes. So that's in essence what it is. What we've articulated in Arlington, that's a little bit different is we're not just saying a total of a hundred and eighty, eighty minutes because that gap between four hundred and thirty-five and a hundred and eighty is so drastic. Um, we're, we're saying a hundred and eighty minutes of core instruction time. Your specials time has to be separate from that, or your intervention time has to be separate from that. What we don't want to do is try to um slice into core time so much that you really can't even teach the standards anymore because you don't have enough time in the day to actually do the curriculum. So um that's where the numbers come from. That's kind of how we're orchestrating our approach towards the numbers is the, is the, is the amount of uh engagement time a student would be asked to do their work or engage in the learning.
And so how do we calibrate that uh to make sure that um, you know, I think in the spring, our experience was, and and I, I have nothing but great things to say about how my own students, uh, my own kids' experience was in the spring. But it seemed like there were, you know, students in different classes with different teachers, maybe had different approaches. So two questions on that is how do we have a more consistent approach between teachers, between grade levels, not just within the campus, but across the district on this? And then two, and I can see maybe this being a bigger issue at the high school level, how do we per- keep the asynchronous environment from turning into a situation where because the student only has the um, that they're not sitting in class and we want them to be engaged for a certain number of minutes, but then the assignments pile up because the idea is, is like, well, they've got, you know, they can work on this throughout the day or throughout the night. We don't have them actually doing more work at home than they otherwise would be doing.
Right. So there's two ways we're trying to approach that. One is um, well, I'm going to give you a couple of recent ways. One is to have a more defined schedule on what learning should look like so the parent actually knows um when that learning is occurring in terms of when the synchronous moments are there and also um what the assignments are going to be. The other thing too is um, part of the connected learning framework that we were, we were talking about training teachers in is this idea of how do you, how do you develop lessons with a certain level of engagement? And so we will have expectations for what their campus courses have to include so that there's some continuity across the system in terms of the quality of instruction that's happening in the online environment. I think the point that I'd, I'm going to say and um is that uh, and you've heard me mention this before, is you're never going to get to absolute um uniformity across the system. And the reason being is because um it just doesn't exist. It it doesn't exist in in education in the, in the face-to-face environment. Um, if you have kids, if, and I'm not using you as the example, I'll just, I'll use myself as an example. If I, in my own, my own children, I have, if I have one that's in sixth grade and one that's in eleventh grade and one's in twelfth grade, their experiences vary from teacher to teacher, and they also experience, vary from school to school. And that's the nature of teaching and allowing teachers to have some flexibility in the way they teach. However, we do want to have at least a baseline expectation for what quality should look like and how to design a learning. So there, to your point, there is some continuity in terms of how much time a student is spending on their work. They're not being asked to be online all day and then do four hours of homework, that kind of structure. Um, but I think you're, though, the, the point that you're bringing up is something I think that is just highlighted to all of us as parents is we send our kids to school every day. That variance we do experience, especially as our kids get older doing homework. Some teachers will, will assign a ton of homework and some kids will have very little homework. And we kind of chalk it up as, well, that's just how school is because that's how it was for us too. Um, the challenge is when you're trying to partner with the school as a parent in the at-home learning environment, um, there, the more structured, more continuity that is, the easier it is in terms of families to be a more meaningful partner with the school. And that's the, that's the, that's the message that we're trying to articulate with our schools. So we're going to do it in the form of a schedule. We are going to train them on the framework in terms of quality. We're going to give them some examples of specific things that need to be embedded in each, in the courses to provide some continuity. Um, those are kind of the district-level structures. And then, of course, having a strong relationship between the school and the parents. But what, what I'm hoping for is that parents will give that feedback. Um, but I do want to encourage parents to think a little bit outside of the, outside of this idea that it's going to be the same way with every teacher at every school because it's just, that's just not how education works.
Right. No, I underst- I understand that. And I was, you know, I had heard, and we, we've all heard. I mean, there were some experiences in the spring where we, there was a lot of grace involved and it was crisis schooling and it was stopgap and we know that. But there were some disparities between, you know, there were um, some students that had maybe two or three assignments a day. And then there were some that it seemed like had ten or fifteen. And and when you're at home, I know from a parent's perspective, it's one thing for your kid to go away and then they come back and they even might even have, you know, they might have a lot of homework. But when they're at home and you're trying to help them through, oh, my gosh, there's fifteen assignments, right? That
No, I hear you.
It's just a little bit different experience.
Yeah, I, I totally agree. And I think the thing that we had to keep in mind too is we're being really intentional about the fact that our curriculum, um, that we teach it. We can't, that, like you mentioned earlier, we're not, we, we can't stay in crisis mode forever. These kids have to move on in their learning. The positive thing that's going to be good for parents this year is you will have access. Um, as parents, they'll have access to links that will show them specifically what's happening in the curriculum during that time. So you'll be able to even see like, where is my student supposed to be? And these lessons are actually related to these standards. Like that kind of visibility will be available to parents because in the text resource system, there's a parent portal that you can access. So um, we're going to try to create some transparency in that way for our families and and create some structures so that that disparity that you described doesn't exist across, you know, wide ranges um across the district or even within the school.
Thank you. And I, I know this is a little bit repetitive for us. I mean, we've got, you, you've explained this to us at length and we, and we know, but I, I want, we have a very large audience tonight, and I'd like you to just get more out of you on that front so they, they can know. Because one of the things that we as trustees have heard a lot over the last few, especially the last, I would say, four or six weeks, are a lot of parents who, it seemed like it was um, parents were generally happy with the way things went in the spring. And then as we got closer to this year and and maybe a fully online model um has become much more of a possibility. And now it sounds like Tarrant County is considering um potentially having a school closure order. So we might be in an online-only environment for some time at the beginning of the year. Um, I, I have seen and heard and received emails and text messages um from people who say, you know, I'm really nervous about an online environment to such, uh, to such an extent that I'm considering withdrawing my student from the district until we can resume in-person instruction. And so I want you know, I want people to know that that what's being planned for the fall, there's definitely going to be growing pains. I mean, public school has been an in-person model since its inception, but um, to have some, to continue that grace that we were shown in the spring and let us develop a new model and let it, let us try to work with parents and students to do it better than we did in the springs. Um, but then a question I have for Dr. Kavasas is, is could you go into a little bit of detail of what the, the real-world consequences um for us would be if we see a number of our parents temporarily withdraw their students from the district?
Yeah, so that's a, that's a great question. And and so um, you know, uh, enrollment loss at, at any level and and specifically during this time uh would be, would be immediate uh financial impact to it, to the district, just to be clear. Uh, the, the state has provided an, an attendance, uh, hold harmless, if you will. In other words, if your attendance drops, it, they'll kind of have a floor to it uh so that you want to stabilize your funding. But they have refused thus far, and I don't think it'll change, uh, to have any uh hold harmless for enrollment loss. So when you think about um student enrollment and if it fluctuates significantly, it's lost uh of funding pretty much uh immediately in terms of the school year. Uh, so much so that, that we know that it's an effort because of enrollment that we have an all-hands-on-deck uh effort to enroll our students, to reach out to parents, to make sure that they understand the options that they have, but also uh that we help them enroll. Because first and foremost, we want to serve the students, but we also want to make contact with them. So um, you know, uh, that's a, that's a whole effort that Dr. Brown is working on uh for enrollment uh effort. Effort that's gonna begin even as early as as this week with some discussion with principals. But, you know, uh enrollment loss adds up very, very quickly. And it it starts to to be a hit of of thousands and and eventually millions uh as we as we move forward. So it's really important that we are able to continue to provide services to students, continue to staff. Because we need the staff uh to to be able to do those things. And so enrollment is plays a critical part in that.
And and can you speak to, are there any, there gonna be sort of? I wouldn't want to call them consequences, but I mean, it would be more difficult for a student to come back in and and get plugged in. And then, once we do go in person, if they've not been in, I mean, in terms of graduation requirements or being up to speed with the the content that they would have been learning?
Yeah, so if if uh somebody waits to to come until face-to-face, whenever that is. Then then it, there's retention issues in terms of will you be able to be promoted to the next grade level? Will you be prepared uh to earn your credit? For example, if it's a secondary student, uh will you be prepared for uh what are those important milestones? Semester exams and things like that. So on occasion, we have students that enroll, uh giving you some examples, third, six weeks of school. That's a very difficult task because they had not been in school. And and in high school in particular, uh it's it's not possible to earn that half-credit, if you will. So, you know, I would, I would certainly encourage early on for students to engage in an online environment. For parents to enroll their students. We're going to be making contact to parents, uh and it'll be a a school effort uh all the way through. To make sure that we connect with our students. You know this, because you know, we've all experienced it. Many, many, many students wait till the first day of school to to come to school and have not enrolled. And they come to pick up their schedule and things like that. That's just historic and that's not unique to Arlington. It happens in in every school system. But it's gonna be imperative that we connect with those students way before school starts. So that they have what they need uh to engage in learning right off the bat. Because, as you know, it will be uh it will be for a grade and it will be for credit. And it will have consequences with promotion and retention. Uh, and that's just the reality. And as Dr. Ward said, you know, we have to, we have to make sure that we're providing the instruction so that students can be successful. And we know that we can be prepared to do that. But we need, it's a two-way street and we need to be prepared with uh with parents and students as well.
And that leads me to to my next question, which is, you know, the discussion we've had tonight. And and we're we're pretty clear at this point that August seventeenth is not gonna be the resumption of in-person. Instruction for us. And and, you know, we were in a position to do well by our employees in the spring. And we we continued paying everyone and um, you know, certainly we'd like to do that as long as we can. But your discussion of there's potential funding implications, we learned recently, I think maybe today, that the controller is projecting a um. Reduction at the state level in terms of funding. Um, and we've heard some rumblings from the state legislature that the H B three funding going on, you know, uh that came into place last year. Might not continue after twenty twenty-one in its current form. So there's all these these variables in play that that deal with funding, but also just the fact that if we don't. Go back in an in-person environment in some form on August seventeen. We have a lot of employees who um their job really exists in in an in-person environment, you know, by bus drivers comes to mind. So can you give a little bit of um insight into how we plan on on at least in the short run? Taking care of employees who fall into that position?
Yeah, absolutely. So uh, as you mentioned, um, you know, if if we don't begin August seventeenth. Which we will likely not begin August seventeenth in person. Then there are functions in the organization. Bus drivers, to some extent custodial, to some extent food services, uh to some extent teacher assistance, et cetera, that we can go down the list. That are are mostly dependent on a face-to-face environment uh in terms of their function. And we know that. So there's two things to balance here. One is serving and protecting our workforce. Because when we do open, we want to have a fully-staffed workforce. It's imperative. Because so to carry out transportation services, to carry out instructional services, food services, custodial services, et cetera. Security is another one, to carry out security services. We want to protect our workforce. We want to make sure that that they're still with us. So that leads to, well, if August seventeenth comes around and we don't open face-to-face. What does a a bus driver do? What does a security guard do? And 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 go down that list. And and those are just some that come to my mind. I'm sure there are others. And so we're working as part of our task force to make sure that we balance those things, the protecting of our workforce. But also to meet some very important needs in our schools upfront. So repurposing, and that might not be the exact word. Maybe it's it's a uh assignment of some uh di- uh different duties to begin with, maybe that's a better way of saying it. Will be something that we're going to uh plan for for our employees. Because our goal is for not, uh our employees for not, for them not to have. A function where we can't use their services. We want to be able to use their services. So a good example is uh enrollment and reaching out to students. And potentially doing some home visits. There are different functions in the organization that can assist with that. You know, that that could help in that effort to make sure, to your point, Mr. Chapa, that our funding and other services continue at a sustained level. And that we don't have these big swings in enrollment and funding and consequences to that, which are very real. The other is to make sure that uh our buildings and that the principals in the buildings have the support they need. In terms of structuring their environment, moving desks around, setting up cafeterias, et cetera. So that when we open, we're we're uh we have all those protocols already physically designed. So teams of individuals that could help principals in that right off the bat to begin that preparation for when we do open. We know that uh that that we want to balance that very carefully with our employees because we want them to stay with us. We want them to continue being part of our A I S D family. But we also know that some of their function is very dependent on normal operation of school. And so from our standpoint, at least our position is that we are going to find. And assign, I should say, important tasks that need to be done. For individuals so that they can continue to be part of our our workforce.
I appreciate I appreciate that explanation. Getting down to the last couple of my my questions here. And I know um, there was a, I think it was in the Star Telegram. There was a statistic that our initial registration numbers were showing a preference of about fifty-four percent of our parents. Who had registered at that point. Had registered for in-person instruction. I think it might have been. Said it was a survey, but I think those were originally, those were actual registration numbers. So they're still preliminary. But have you noticed, has your staff noticed any trends in our preliminary registration numbers uh in terms of in-person versus online? You know, is there a discernible difference in terms of um schools that that might have different socioeconomic status? Is there a difference in geography, things of that? Can you speak to any, um, you know, that not having in-person school is is gonna be a huge equity issue for us? So can you speak to any issues that are are interesting things that you've seen in the preliminary registration data so far?
Well, you know, I I think it, and and again, it is preliminary. Because as the COVID situation continues to to change, especially, you know, here in Arlington and Tarrant County. That that feeling or those feelings change, I think. But we have seen that there, it holds pretty steady. At about, you know, uh fifty-fifty, sometimes it gets up to sixty. We know that different schools, though. Are are more apt to want to come to face-to-face and for a variety of reasons. And 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 we know that. And so, as I said earlier at the beginning of the meeting, uh I know it's a disappointment. When we talk about or when I mention that we will likely not have face-to-face August seventeenth. I know it's a disappointment to to a good number of people. Because they they desire face-to-face. And like you all have mentioned and we've all mentioned, we all desire face-to-face instruction. The question is, when is it safe, you know, for for everyone? But the trends are, Mr. Chapa, that uh early kind of trends are uh about sixty-forty, sixty wanting to come back. I think those numbers are beginning to change. Because those were early numbers. I think when we opened registration, a good number of people filled it out. And they were, you know, from that perspective, we opened July the seventh, just to give you a perspective. And it continues to change uh the mood. Uh, I think the bigger uh probably overarching issue with re- with uh with registration. Is the need for us as a system to be very persistent with uh with students and parents to help them register. Because I think we're 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 not at the at the level where we want in terms of registration traffic, if you will. And understandably so, understandably so. But I think we're certainly at that point. And and I get, you know, again, Dr. Brown is gonna lead that effort with principals uh as early as is it Thursday? Tracy, help me with that, yeah. Where we're going to discuss uh basically Operation Enrollment. Where we're gonna reach out and help people enroll, but also help them uh start accessing services. And connections so that when August seventeenth comes, they're well-prepared to connect first day of school. Into online learning.
I I I have a lot more questions. I'm sure all of us do, and I can't ask them all. And I don't want to keep y'all up all night and 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 some of them might only be interesting to me at this point. But something that that you mentioned and that other people have mentioned, and I I really want. To communicate in how grateful um I am, my family is. And I, so many people I've talked with uh to you and your staff. I know that it has seemed like throughout the last few months that sometimes things change from day to day. And a lot of that has been driven by levels above us um that we have little control over, but there are things that directly affect us. And in in every instance, um y'all have worked so hard to roll with the punches to try to recalibrate and come up with new plans. And and there are literally thousands of people that have been working on this um that that people don't see. And I I hope um the community knows how hard that y'all are working. It really since the this began, I it it seems so long ago, but this started towards the end of spring break. And uh and and I think it was, you know, Thursday, we we had a discussion of spring break. And on Monday morning, um, you know, um, I don't know if he's on anymore, but Mr. Lewis and his food services staff were. Perhaps the first, we were the first, perhaps the first district in the state that was serving meals um to students. And and from that, uh that really set the tone of how y'all have approached this whole crisis, really. And um, time and again, y'all have been creative and look at thinking outside the box. And and now um the online-only environment seems like it's going to change this. But we're one of the few districts I know of that uh when we opened registration, we said parents had a choice between online and in-person. Not only did you have a a choice, we we didn't set a deadline really on when they, you had to pick as a parent. And you could change your mind. And we were committed to making that work and we were committed to making it work, even after we started on August seventeenth. That if you chose online, but on August seventeenth, you felt comfortable with in-person, we were gonna commit to making that happen and vice versa. And so, again, I can't um, I can't express uh how grateful I am. I know how much hard work you've been doing. And uh we've still got a long way to go, but. Know that a lot of people are are pulling for our staff and and helping us get through this environment.
Thank you, Mr. Chapa. Uh, well said. I think everyone has had an opportunity to speak. I have just a couple of questions and I will make them brief. Dr. Brown, I think you had mentioned about the thermometers uh being on back order through T E A. Are we anticipating if and not if, when we actually do open up? If this back order issue will be over with? Or if not, how else do we secure the the P B that we'll need?
Sorry, I said I'm me myself. Um, yes, we actually do have some non-contact thermometers uh in stock. We're just waiting for additional ones from T E A, just to make sure we have a, you know, a decent number. So um, right now, I think we have about seven hundred non-contact thermometers that are on back order. But I can't speak to the exact number that we have on hand. I'm not sure if.
Dr. Hill can. Tracy, Dr. Hill can.
Dr. Hill, do you have that information?
Or maybe Cindy Powell, I'm I'm sorry.
We do have several hundred. Uh, we've also just deployed some to campuses already. And we are looking at another uh solution that may be able to to do temperature checks in a mass way. So we're still looking at that option as well, so trying to attack it from many different directions.
Okay.
And Cindy, you had a number, Ms. Powell?
But we do, we have six hundred and ten, I think, in inventory. We've ordered a number uh dating back into the spring. And then there are another approximately four hundred and twenty-some odd, I think, from T E A that are the ones that are on back.
And and we've also, President Mace, to to Dr. Hill's point, because I, just to make sure we have clarity on this. We're looking also at different tools for that, not just those thermometers, but scanners and things like that. To to do a comprehensive effort, especially in our big schools, uh to make sure we can do this efficiently.
Key. Okay, thank you. And then um, Dr. Brown, once again, so we talked about having masks if they're needed for those students who may not have masks. When they're entering the schools. For those students whose first contact with our school is getting on the bus in the morning. Will we also have masks on the bus to provide for the students who may not have?
Yes, we will. Yes, we will have masks on the bus.
Okay, very good. And then my last question was for um credit recovery, which is is a big deal. For the students that are not logging on, are we thinking of creating a a group, a task force, if you might call it? That might be keeping an eye on some of that situation to reach out to some of these students? Just so if just a call may help, not need that credit recovery, it would be helpful?
Yeah, so there's a, so that's part of the actual attendance task force that's being worked on. There are structures and protocols, then guidance that we're gonna be providing schools in terms of who calls and at what. And who 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 engages with the student and who that, who and when we do it. So it's not just the teachers doing it. There are other members of the staff and faculty who are actually engaged in that process, including counselors, um some clerks. That we're actually attaching that to specific roles in the building so that we can keep track of kids in terms of their attendance. Because to what was made earlier, their engagement might not all happen at a very specific time during the day. And we can't expect teachers to be up at night, every night at twelve o'clock midnight, trying to see whether a student engaged or not. So there, the attendance committee, which is actually being led um by Dr. uh Dalla. Over Arlington High is developing protocols. And we were pretty much close to the end of those, so we'll we'll be ready to start teaching principals here real soon.
Okay, very good. Thank you for that. Um, those were all of my questions. I appreciate the questions from my colleagues. For this called meeting, I I really don't think that too many questions is is even something that could happen. I do want to say, Dr. Words, I don't know what time zone you're in. But looking back and seeing the sunlight on those pains has really helped me get through this meeting, because I feel like it's seven P M. So thank you for that. Just had to make that comment. But thank you so much um to our staff. And um, my colleague said it well, Justin, you did a really good job. But just a sincere, heartfelt thank you to the task team. You know, if if anyone asks, what has the district been doing since March? This is what you've been doing. You've been going through information. You've been thinking ahead of, okay, this happened in the spring. What if this doesn't go away and we have to do this again in the fall? What does it need to look like? And y'all have been working on that since March. Thank you very much for doing that. I appreciate the fact, Dr. Kavastos, that you're making sure that we are plugged in to the our county medical personnel. So that the information that we're getting is about our community. It's from an individual who's in and out the hospitals, who sees and knows the statistics of what's going on. Thank you for continuing to do that. To my colleagues, thank you for everything that you've done. I just want to do, say one thing. Prior COVID nineteen, our mission was to empower and engage all students to be contributing. Responsible citizens striving for their maximum potential through relevant, innovative and rigorous learning experiences. Now, during COVID nineteen and post-COVID nineteen. Now during COVID nineteen and post-COVID nineteen, that will still be consistent. So there's our consistency, there's our drive. We continue to look at our mission for the district and make sure that we're meeting that in the midst of a pandemic. And for that, I appreciate what you do. I know parents are appreciating what you do. And this work has been very difficult, very tasking for everyone behind the scenes. But you continue to do it, you haven't stopped, you haven't slowed down because the mission is very important. Our students is very important. Our focus is our staff. Our focus is the community and making sure that our community is safe. We all understand that, uh, whatever decision we come to may not make everyone happy. But for those that it might not make happy, I hope that at least it makes you feel good to know that you are in the hands of people who have taken advice from the community, from parents, from staff, and didn't just come up with what we think might be the best thing to do, but put all those pieces together to make a puzzle that may be full of different colors and not the, the shape that you want it to be. But it is from input of everything that we could think possible. I think one of our speakers said, um, countless individualized options. Absolutely correct. So how do you, how do you make something that's going to meet the needs of that? Very difficult. But once again, I appreciate all the work that you've done. And like I said, our mission prior COVID has not changed. And so I know the work that the district is doing is not going to change either. So from the board, I really appreciate the presentation tonight. I hope for many parents, it has answered some questions that they have. Happy to see the guide coming out. More happy to see the details on the internet because as we said, things can change daily, weekly, hourly. So I'm glad that that information is being put on the, out on the website so it can be updated as needed, um, and have that guideline. So, once again, with that being said, just thank you. Thank you to the staff for having your long day and spending this time with us until eleven fifteen PM, uh, for what we consider very important work. Thank y'all very much. So now we come to our open form non-agenda items. Mrs. Benjamin, do we have any requesters registered to address the board regarding non-agenda items?
No ma'am, we do not.
Okay, then we will continue on in our agenda. Next in our agenda is our superintendent's report, Dr. Kavastos.
You've heard enough of my report today, so, so I don't have a report. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, any of our trustees have any reports? Okay, no reports. Um, I just want to, um, lead off with just saying one more thing. I know it's late, but I want to make sure that, uh, we do mention, um, the passing of one of our school namesake, Ms. Beth Anderson, who did pass away on July the twelfth. Um, she was the namesake of Anderson Elementary School. And she was born in Blessing, Texas on January fifth, nineteen twenty-five. And she told everyone that they renamed the town Blessings after she was born there. Um, Ms. Anderson was a, a really special person. Um, I know the school celebrated her ninety-fifth birthday at the school. It was, uh, very amazing. And even, um, at ninety-five, it meant the world to her to see the students performing, to see the students speaking and just to be surrounded by young people. So, um, if you have an opportunity, when you're out on the website, looking at all of our information we've discussed tonight, please just take a look at the write-up on, uh, Ms. Beth Anderson. And I think it's, it's a very great write-up. And once again, uh, we have really appreciated, um, having our namesake and having her here. And just want to say we're still sending out prayers to the family. But what a wonderful individual Ms. Beth Anderson was. So, Ms. Secretary, do we have any items to consider?
Uh, no, Madam President, we do not.
Okay. Well, it is eleven fifteen PM and this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.